Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Good Monday, October 21st, 24th. Town of Rhinebeck, 9th Board Meeting. You ready? I see you're on the phone. I'm expecting John. I haven't heard of him last, but I can't really call him anymore. I don't believe there's any change to be in general for this meeting. I don't know of any questions or corrections. You've received the meeting notes from Jim. Am I on the meeting here? He doesn't seem to be. Hello? I'll switch it. Yeah, that's better. Sorry, everybody. You've all received the meeting notes that have been circulated from Jim. Does anybody have any question or comment? May I have a motion to accept the meeting notes submitted? Motion second, all of us in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries. You have in draft form the October 7th minutes. Are there any additions, amendments, corrections? Hearing none, may I have a motion to accept the October 7th minutes? Motion? Second, all of us in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Any correspondence or announcements? All right, hearing none. We will wait a couple minutes. I don't believe there's anything we can move ahead to at this point. So we will just tell a few minutes while we wait until 6:05 to move into the public hearing. Jim, maybe while we're waiting, I think you might want to share with planning board members a little bit of information we've learned about D E C regulations and things that will be coming out. A little bit we learned at this point, just to make them aware that there'll be some changes. And for anybody with applications coming up in the future, you might be interested in this as well.
One second. So the D E C is coming out with new regulations related to wetlands. A lot of it, I think, and I'm still digging through it along with Christian Moore, who's the planning board engineer, digging through these, trying to figure out exactly what it's going to mean for us moving forward. But effectively, they take effect January 1st. And my understanding is that any project that's not approved as of January 1st has to be those who stand. I don't think it's going to change anything. Projects are in front of us right now, but it may start incorporating more review from a further distance, especially from the wetlands, I think than what there is now. Again, I don't know exactly what that means. Christian's looked into it more detail. He's kind of diving into that. To provide us a summary, I haven't had time. We will be potentially reviewing more projects or in more detail, further distance from the wetland.
Are you applauding?
Yes, yeah. More projects.
More projects, Joe, more projects. That's good, thank you. But I think it's going to affect septic water and wetland buffers and other things. So there's a few who are out there submitting applications or looking for applicants. We're aware that it's coming out.
Yes, we will, I mentioned this, we will have to figure out what it means for us. But essentially, N Y C R R, Part 662 is being appealed. And Part 664, which is the freshwater wetlands jurisdiction and classification. And it goes into all sorts of different classifications about wetlands. We're going to be looking at not only at distances, but also how we classify wetlands. Burnout pools. There'll be different classes of wetlands. There'll be other elements that we're going to have to look at and figure out, you know, what it means for us versus what it might mean for the D E C review. And again, I don't know the details on all of that. So if anyone's interested, you can certainly find Part 664 out there on the internet somewhere. That's Christian's thing he just said to me, I'll take a look at.
We've also been talking to Christian, considered as more and more information is made available and greater understanding, that we might bring him in for a workshop for the entire planning board to orient us to use new regulations and how they apply to our review process. We should be looking at some training, it seems like a likely one. And he's having to spend some time with others in his office, trying to understand it from their perspective, so.
Sam, I'm sorry, Jim, did you say at the beginning that this is really an outgrowth of the change in definition of water in the U.S.?
I don't know for sure if that's the case.
It seemed to be kind of contemporaneous with that, that seemed to have appeared. But that was always sort of a gray area, and Rhinebeck kind of falls into a special category that we recognize, those federal wetlands. And with that definition being somewhat of a flux, it's good to have the guidance from the state, especially with things like burnout pools. I know there'll be talk about this in the past, it's really critical and important areas to be watched for for development at different places.
There might be new maps coming out, I think I've heard there'll be maps coming out. And what's something I was going to say? Yeah, we'll be digging into this, see what it means for the reviews that we need to do. Oh, I know what it was. In the pre-conference meetings, we've been telling applicants, their engineers, representatives, that they need to be aware of this at this point. Any pre-cons coming in are almost certainly going to work their way to January. So just to make sure they're aware of this. They've worked toward that moving forward.
And I'm presuming this sort of training would be welcomed by the C A B as well?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we danced around it and then we got into 6:05. So we begin with the first public hearing this evening, and that is of Christopher Heinz, 360 Morton Road, Site Plan and Special Use Permit. Site Plan and Special Use Permit. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. Good evening, Mark Vermitzke. I'm there representing Willy Clip LLC, owners Christopher and Laura Heinz. This application, the application in front of this board is for a site plan and special permit for consideration of construction of a pool pavilion on the property. I also note that this project also required application to the Town of Rhinebeck zoning board appeals for consideration of an area variance. That I'll get into a little bit later in the presentation. And then also, just going through the required approvals for the project right now, it will also require consideration by the Dutchess County Department of Health for amendment in addition to the existing sanitary system. So this property is located at the southwest of the corner of Morton and Mill Road. The property is approximately 37, 46 acres in size. And you can see that it also, it also, the southwest of the corner of the property, Hudson River is located here. If it's a historic property in the Town of Rhinebeck, the current zoning for this property is H P 20. On the property is the existing residence. It's a two-story residence located right here. It has, you know, single-family residential, has six bedrooms. Also, you know, through previous, previous application, there is a barn, a garage, located here from the previous application with the board. Other actually, two bedrooms located over there. Driveway that comes in from Morton Road was part of a previous approval from this board. You can see right here, this was former access was on Mill Road. It's now located off Morton Road. There's some existing amenities on the property. There's a tennis court and basketball court located here. This area right here is actually the, you know, existing sanitary disposal area. It's the exhorting field. And as you go to the south and east for the main residence, there's an existing pool that's located right here. And so this, requesting this board's consideration for a construction of a pool pavilion that's located in this area, due east of the existing pool. Access will still be, you know, to the, you know, there's no change in access from Mill Road. From the existing residence, there's some associated landscaping that the other consultants on the project will get into later, that will, you know, lead into the pool pavilion area. Also, as I mentioned before, require approval from the Dutchess County Health Department. Part of this pool pavilion facility will be a bathroom. And so it's just a single bathroom that's going to be used, and it'll connect it to the existing septic system. The, we noted all through this application that the intention of this is for a pavilion only. It's not intended to be an accessory dwelling in any way. And as we go through the presentation, I think with the architect and landscape architects are also here to continue through with the presentation, we'll get into a little more detail with regards to, you know, to layout and building elevations for this pool pavilion area. Right now, it's, in addition to construction of this, there'll be, you know, the typical security fence that's required for a pool. Jim, one of your notes last time was, I added a note with regard to meeting the zoning standards for, you know, for construction of pool and protection, adequate fencing around the pool. In addition to that, you know, through a site visit with members of the planning board, there was some conservative, you know, just interest in being able to maintain certain view sheds from Mill Road right here. So the plans, the overall site plan shows photographs that were taken there that the architect, the landscape architect will get into further in the review. And then finally, I mentioned that it does require an area variance from the Town of Rhinebeck zoning board appeals. Actually, last Wednesday was the public hearing for that. That public hearing was closed. We actually have a site visit with the Z B A this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. And so the specific details with regard to this area variance is that the pool pavilion, being an accessory structure, is in front of the principal dwelling. It's in the front yard, so the front yard of Mill Road. It's in front of that principal dwelling. And also, it's actually less than required sepat, front yard sepat there. And so that's the area variance that is being considered by the zoning board appeals. If, or I'll just continue on with our presentation and have the request that the architect continue on.
Hello? Hi. This is Konstant Papadimitrakopoulos. I work for Haynes Thompson Architects, and I'm the architect for the project. Yes, so can we go to the next slide, please? So we added some renderings, because I know there were some questions by Greg about the columns, or some questions about Enna, about the space behind. And I think that took like one inch, could help a lot, also about the fence, the glass fence in the front. But you can see here the material palette, our wood fascia, the very small area that's enclosed. And I know that the roof was brought up as a size of the building here. I think you can understand how much of the building is outdoors. And that's just a green roof on the top, especially when the windows open up. And then you see the outdoor shower, the barbecue area, the fireplace with the outdoor space. This is an approach coming from the building, from the main house, I'm sorry. And you can see here the steps that replicate the steps of the main porch of the building. You can see here the columns we were discussing before, how they're wrapped with wood, the two T columns. And the overall material palette here, trying to be very respectful of what's existing. Wooden fascia with a wooden back for the closets areas. And then here you can see through the dog trot, which is open. Here, this is the mechanic room, and here you see the gym room that I'll discuss further next week. This is looking out, you see how the block goes down, and you can see the Hudson here. You see how the windows gang up behind, that's the fire, because you have the outdoor fire with indoor. And you can see how much space is out and what's in here, and how this space, for example, will open. This is the east elevation. You can see this, yeah, here, the trees and the wall, we have the door for the pool, so it's for safety. And this is the glasses that maybe one, I'm sorry, shower where we had gone for our walk there had added. And I think works really nice in making this scaled up, scaled down, sorry, breakdown of the, of the pool pavilion. And here you can see the house in the background, and also understand that this, you know, it was a question if this could ever be a room, like, there were no windows here in the first place. anyhow, so we changed the closet too. So this is the gym room, this is the mechanic's room, this is for the pool equipment, and this is the dog trot that goes through when the door opens. And then you have the enclosed space, which is something between 30 and 16, 30 by 16. And you can see here how much of this roof is built. Next, please? And yeah, and this is looking from the south. And you can see the gym on the back, and you can see the hot tub, how like the cliff that the pavilion is on turns around in two steps. The outdoor shower, how the wall goes down, which was something that was discussed as comments when we went the first time, so that was lowered. And you can see this layering I'm talking about with the stone and stepping down. And these are the green roofs. Next, please? This is the plan, and this is the indoor space. And this closet was looking this way, and Enna had asked whether this could ever be a room. We changed the closet, so there's no closets here. The bathroom is out, and now just have, just like order, it's like the gym equipment here. Whatever is, the stripes are like the wood that's on the floor of the deck. And you can see the steps and its relation to the pool and the view outside. And then this is the mechanical room for the equipment, for the hot tub, which is here, and the existing, existing pool equipment. Next, please? Here you can see the roof, and again, take from this roof, half of that is outdoors. All of this part is kind of a portico, so that's outdoors too. But you can see that all of the, you know, the green roofs and then the dog trot is open sky, so there's no connection hidden to the bathroom. In order to build the bathroom, you have to be outside. Next, please? Here, it's hard to read, but there was a conversation about what is the green roof perennial? I think that was Enna that had asked that. So we added it to the exterior schedule, the central, which is a blue spruce stone core, which is a very typical, oh yes, now you can see it very, thank you. So we are, we're green with here. So you can see it, it's called a blue moon. It's a standard product that this green roof company brings to the forage, to the forest standard product. Here, there's a general, there were some questions about the functionality. And then here we added this pollinate from, that shows the portico and the plan of the original house to show the, to show the heights and how this, this has been replicated in our pavilion as it turns around, create the same language of the outdoor space that exists there, and try to kind of match what the exterior space of this portico to the original houses. So you can see here the columns and the windows and the steps. And this is the maximum height, and even our roof is way down, way lower than the maximum height of 20. Next one, please? This is the view from the south. This is the east elevation. Now, I know that there was a question brought up about the maple tree that's in this corner at the last visit you guys went. What we're suggesting as an extra portion to make sure, because we want that tree there, I think that's very important, is like to make a zigzag in this mechanical room, remove the glasses, and just put like wood. So whereas the foundation would do like a little zigzag, so you would be at least 15 feet away from the critical root of this maple tree, so nothing will happen. And then the mechanical room would still be there without making sure that, you know, even if we touch a little bit, the earth stayed, the roof, like, it would be far beyond like the critical mass of the roof, which usually is reflected from the tree on top. So my colleague, the landscape architect, will talk more about methods, means of protecting these trees, but I know it was brought up, so I wanted to address it in the celebration. Next, please? And then this is the north facade. And then this is the landscape, the landscape of, of Michael. Thank you so much.
Evening, Michael Weber, from Arcai La Studio in New York. And I want to run through how this building sits in the landscape. Konstantin has explained to you all the elements of the structure itself, pavilion. So if you can go to the next slide. So what we have, the existing house is here, it's in the existing parking area. All remains unchanged. The pool pavilion that we've been talking about is here. The ground is open, it's decked space that's open to the sky, remember? And as Konstantin explained, it's just a small portion that is really enclosed. It's that portion there. What we're doing is, this existing swimming pool has the pavilion next to it, and what we're doing is we're linking it through a series of gardens. So that kind of becomes the hinge that takes this existing swimming pool and ties it into a proposition for the overall site, so that there's one garden here, and then you come through, and you're in a more of an enclosed garden, and then you come into that pool, that pool space there. We're going to outdoor hot tub or spa here to shower, Konstantin mentioned. The pool mechanicals are more or less in the place where, well, not more or less, they are in the same place, where they're existing now. And what we're proposing is a fence out in the landscape that comes around here. So if we go to the next slide, I can show you a little bit more about what these things all look like. So again, we have the garden here connecting to the house, and then you pass through into an enclosed garden, which has hedges around it. I think if you can go ahead a little bit, I want to see the images on the side. Great. Yep. Perfect. Okay, so we come in here, you're enclosed in the hedge, these green spaces, there's a, you know, a little something in the middle there. But nevertheless, you come through, it's a pea gravel, something similar to this, this effect, but this pea gravel area. So you come through here, all permeable, and then you come to a garden wall. Looks a little bit, looks like this. And that is the beginning of the pool enclosure. There's two gates that come through here. Now you're inside the pool enclosure zone. You have the pool pavilion, which is a deck that's open to the sky. And some paved area, blue sort of paving, adjacent to the pool. On the other side, we have lawn. You all know what that looks like. And then there's, the wall wraps around here, and then it drops down to be a curb and a bit of a retaining wall at this end, so we match this stone effect. And on top of that, we have glass rail. That looks like this, which is very hard to see, which is the point, so that when we're on the pool or at the pool, we look right through how to view, yet we're still creating that required enclosure. So it's very important. Then when you get down to here, we can just move up a little bit. Yeah, thank you. Out in the meadow, we're going to talk a little bit more about the meadow, but there is a fence that is meant to disappear in the meadow, blend with the existing vegetation. And we'll work with the topography as it wraps around into the meadow and goes down the slope. Let me go to the next slide, please? This is site grading. The swimming pool is an existing pool, so everything really is working around that pool. And obviously, we have existing grades over here that we're not touching. So you can see there's a little bit of manipulation here, but for the most part, it's really fits very nicely on site. We're able to take advantage of existing grades and do minimal disturbance. Next one, please? Okay, so this is where we get into the discussion about the view corridor. These are views that were taken, photos that were taken when we were all on site a few months ago, weeks ago. So this is the view on the top. You see a little bit of view from Mill Road out to the river and the mountains beyond, with the trees. At this point, you have a similar, very small view there. So if we, so what our client is, what we're proposing, and our client is committing to, is this area preserving and maintaining, enhancing, I should say, the view corridor. So if we go to the next slide, we can talk a little bit about the plants. The diagram shows it there. So this zone, we'd like to commit to annual mowing and selective pruning of the trees to enhance and preserve that view, making someone previous slide, out to the river from Mill Road. And then we're planning to bulk this up, so that we filter, further filter that view of the pavilion from Mill Road. So really, this becomes the focus, which is enhancing what's already there. This zone down here, south of the corridor, not really doing anything of that, just leaving that the way it is and letting nature take its course. But this would be managed and enhanced, as would this additions here, no additions here. And the next slide, I think, is the last, maybe the last one? Like, last time we were here, we talked about, we like to keep the lighting very subtle. We're not looking to play a, you know, it's not a sports stadium. And we really, it's about weight hiding. So from the house, you come through, and there are small path lights that are shown here, and they bring you into the pool area. And there are lights at the gate, gates on either side here, which is this small picture here. Everything's pointing down, so it minimizes the amount of light spread. It's really just about finding your way from here out and back to the house. That's the last slide for the landscape portion. Yes? Charles? Charles?
I'm Charles Burdum. I'm the founder and president of the Cultural Landscape Foundation. I saw you guys a few weeks ago and so I wanted to go longer. I just, I guess I'm the closer here today and, you know, I took the train from Manhattan today and I hooked up. I was fortunate enough to get one of those seats next to the window. And in all the years I've been living in the Northeast, in New York City kid, I live in DC now, I can't remember a fall color season like this and I'm emotionally overwhelmed actually. And I started thinking about Calvert Box writing about the value of Sky and Skyline when he was working in Ollana. And to see a property where there is an opportunity to recognize the civicness of that place to the community, symbolically, emotionally. I just want to sort of reinforce the closing statements that Michael was making about this sort of conservation view shed. This idea that there's a vegetated veil screening, the reconstruction for the enhancing once there, building on the genus low side of the place. And then with purpose, through a civicness, maintaining that view shed. And so I just want to say that it's been a distinct pleasure for me to be able to work on the other side of the fence this time and to work with the design team. And I, I just want to try to close with a reflection, which is, as a person that deals with landscape history, great works of landscape architecture don't just happen, that they're, they're because there's great patrons behind them. And I want to close with a quote by Edward Bock Tower Sanctuary, where he said, "Make your world a little better because you have to live in it." And what I love about this project is it recognizes this place in, in the larger community and that commitment to the borrowed view, what it symbolizes and to preserving, protecting and enhancing it over time. Thank you. Oh, there you are. I'll turn it back to you.
So that concludes our presentation. Any questions from the board?
Hello, I'm going to start with Jim, see if he has anything.
Just two minor comments, I think we mentioned this before. Fence, obviously, the defense permit, I think we discussed that last time. The discussion about, I guess, moving the foundation a little bit for that trees and just to finalize those details before we get to the end of the process. If that's changed.
So that, it is, because it was, you know, based on, you know, we had, and it was past the due date for submission, so I wanted to be able to bring it up at the, at the public hearing, but it's the intention of the applicant, applicant to, you know, submit an amendment to the board for consideration.
And we're not really moving a couple tonight because we're still waiting on the CBA.
Correct.
And the only other one is I don't know that the planning board absolutely determined that it wouldn't be an accessory going in that space. So we should probably do that since the discussion was going. Otherwise, I'd go back to this, it's primarily the, it's really the start preservation.
All right. Site visit report. Brad, I know you're the lead.
Yeah, I went there for the CAB, but at the same time, then I'm the lead, so I'll check in.
All right, Lee's going first.
Okay, I'll go. So I, it was, it was very helpful and informative, I think, being there. I thought that, you know, some of the different areas that we were looking at, which I thought was really important, was going to this, you know, view shed from the road, talking a lot about the landscaping, how to really articulate some of the, the natural buffers that are growing on the road compared to making it feel really forced. And I think we've got some of the answers around that and had some good discussion through the board. Overall, like the, I thought that they had these sort of shade, you know, temporary shade poles up that gave us some good context of what the building would look like. And I believe those would be a little higher than maybe what the wall would be, a little lower, something right around there. And I thought that was really helpful. It didn't, it didn't feel overly invasive based on what we would see from the road. I thought that, you know, even the way that the path, at one point, we were walking the path of where the gardens will go and we had to reorient ourselves for a moment. And there were some smaller fruit trees that looked like won't even be taken down or hurt through the process, but I'm very pleased to hear that the large tree, which was a big concern of ours, that there's a way of protecting that. Because I think of all the things, that was like the one sort of bigger concern I saw. But it felt really well thought out and I was very grateful for both the view shed, preservation, and the thought process around the indigenous plant, some of people are that, yeah.
No, I certainly agree with all of that. Jim, there was one photo that I sent through that I'd like to comment on. This, I believe, is looking from the road at the site where the pavilion will be. And it's kind of indicative of the sense that you get along the road, rather than a property being screened off, you get peaks from time to time as you walk along the road. So you might see a little corner of the white house and then you might see a little snatch of the red barns. My understanding is that the plan for this area as well is for it to be mowed once a year to, to keep brush out. My overall feeling was that less is more, even, even in front of the pavilion, I would hate to see thick plantings, you know, that somehow change this feeling along this stretch of openness. That really was kind of, you know, Mark, you know.
Right, yeah. I visited at the same time as Edna and Leece, but on behalf of the CAB, we discussed it at our, at our last meeting. And I'll just read the findings that I typed out. The developed area of the pool house is large, bigger than the pool itself, and it makes a significant imposition on the site. The pre-existing pool itself has been noted as an imposition on the historic landscape and I believe Mr. Revell had mentioned the burping out, a very graphic description of, you know, how that pool is currently placed on, on the site. So the pool house is an effort to reconcile that installation while keeping the roofline low and using vegetation on and around the building to soften and disguise the building when viewed from the roadway. The applicant is cultivating evergreen vegetation along the roadway with a strategy of allowing for a limited peekaboo view of the Hudson River along Mill Road. The planned formal garden to the north of the pool is laid out of rational access in alignment with the pool house construction and the walkways leading to east of the main house. Little has been offered or identified concerning the historic context of the landscape in relation to its neighboring Wilderstein property. The design of the pool house itself is modern and distinct from the Wildercliff house. It uses natural wood, stone and glass, a green roof and wall vegetation to soften the construction and create an appearance that is aligned with the natural surroundings and distinct from the historic construction. So I did come across a, a reference in some of the documentation that we have in the National Register that the two properties were actually associated at a period in time in late 19th century and that Calvert Box designed the landscape at Wilderstein. And I don't know if any fragment of that exists or if there's, you know, anything that is worthy of paying attention to or paying tribute to, but it is, it is a, it's a beautiful site and I think a great deal of effort has gone into thoughtfully making this installation and showing appreciation for the view of the river from Mill Road, which we had discussed at, at the, at the site, because that's a, that's a very valuable asset for the town.
Did we have a report from Payback? Nothing. All right. So I'll open it up to planning board members. I have the opportunity to visit the site, which I think there was two of you, Sean and, or Sharon, others, if you have additional comments. Any questions or comments about the application that we heard? Well, then, I think at this point, we're simply going to continue the public hearing, awaiting the results of your interference in the zone for review. Is that correct?
Sure. Any other questions from the board or the public?
Yeah, I'm going to go to that. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes, or please call to Michael. On it.
My name is Bill Oris, this is my wife, Jean Murphy. We live at 538 South Mill Road, so we are the southern adjoining neighbors to Francis'. So I'm not sure what's most useful for us to talk about. I'll just mention a couple of things, no particular order. First of all, they're really next neighbors. That's exactly.
More to that. They'll always be there, but thank you.
Also, as you know, the Mill Road down past Millwood is no longer at the moment. So anytime we leave our house, we are driving by the Heinz property. There's no turning right from there, it's always left. So where they're putting the pool, where they're putting the pavilion seems to be a perfectly reasonable place to us. And the other thing I'll mention too is we've been able to see some of the changes they've already made to the property. And to me, it seems like they're really focused on trying to keep things respectful and in taste and in keeping with the history of the house. Do we think that's right?
Anyone else? All right. What's your schedule for the CBA?
Meeting on Saturday at 11:00.
But you will not get a, you won't get a resolution?
It's the next thing.
The next thing, so you have to go on that.
Yes.
Anything else from anyone?
No, I just have a question, like something to what Edna said and the opinion of the board. Like, and if I understood correctly, you didn't, you were actually, were you opposing of additional plantings on the east side of the river?
No, absolutely not. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
I'm sure that no one plans to have a wall planted.
That's not the intention.
If I could see a peak of the pavilion as I walk by someday, I would find that perfectly fine and maybe lovely. That's a point I'm trying to make.
Okay.
Not trying to screen it out.
Okay.
Because there is already a certain feeling of openness that's kind of unusual along this stretch. But that's very, very pleasant.
And I would concur with Edna's assessment that it's, should be avoided, you know, put in a purposeful evergreen screening to kind of hide everything. I like the strategy of, you know, having it kind of mixed up and having a little bit of visibility. One of the things that we discussed is the, kind of the evolution of the property where at, as long as I can remember, you couldn't see anything along the road, it was just completely obscured. And then a previous owner went and clear cut everything, conceding a house, a property. So this is, I think, a very intelligent balance between those two extremes and things suits the property very well.
Thank you.
All right. With that, if there's nothing else, I think we should have the motion to continue the public hearing.
I'm not sure, pardon you, because the CBA is Angela and the planning board. It's two days after.
Okay. That's, we have to.
So we have to go to where we have to go.
So we do.
Are these two weeks, three weeks, and four months?
Well, if we went, say, instead of four weeks from today, if we went six weeks.
December 2nd.
That would be December 2nd. That's, that's the difference.
That's.
Get you in a little, a little earlier. That's the best we can do. That should get you after the, some of the.
Great. And you also, I also should have a health department.
Well, that, you wouldn't. That would be a little suspension. All right. Let's, so may I have the motion to December 2nd, please?
So.
If all of us are favored, I have no suspension. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, everything, speaking, we've got Emily Futter, 524 Main Road, site management special, for the first three places.
Good evening. Ben Raffin, Raffin Landscape, he's representing the clients. Which button is this, sir?
I think the normal red dash.
Uh, you want to go through everything again, like the first two times, or do you want me to address? There was a couple of things that had been mentioned at the last meeting that I spoke at length to the clients about, one of which was a particular concern, the lighting of the sports court. The clients said that they are perfectly fine just dropping that and not putting any lighting on the sports court. They said after, they thought about it a little more, they probably not going to be out there trying to play pickleball or basketball after dark. So they said, you know, in keeping the neighborhood possible home that may be constructed here to be courteous to them, eliminating that would, would help align those lines. We had also talked, the board had talked about possibility of like switching these two locations, basically moving the sports court here and the grassy player here. That seems to be something that they are very reluctant to do. I guess you could say they're not completely unwilling to do, but very reluctant to do. Another thing was potentially discussed is eliminating this fence because that would basically, there would be two fenced areas. Again, they're, they're reluctant to do so and not like completely unwilling. You know, they'd like to get this project going, so they're sort of willing to make some compromises to do so. And I guess the question is, is if they forego a fence here and two years down the road, they decide, hey, you know, we're playing soccer or croquet here and the ball's going all over the place, getting stuck in the bushes, is it a possibility that, you know, we just go separately and impregnate for this? So that was sort of concerns that we spoke about. And we also had talked about the potential of moving this outside of the side law setback to not require a side law variance. The CBA's opinion is, seems to be that they weren't terribly concerned with the location of this, given the other elements in the design.
That's not determination.
Correct, that's correct.
That's your reading of their comment.
Yeah. And the clients speaking with the neighboring property, the neighbors expressed to them, their only concern was the lighting, to propose lighting on the sports court, which they eliminated, and not the relationship of the sports court to the side law.
Really all I have left is.
You still need the CBA to make a final decision, right, stuff, and then do it by next month?
Yeah.
If they hold the trouble gap, I was going to say you guys.
So at the, the planning board protocol was to hold the public hearing open, which the CBA has done, being that's the way that the CBA met in October before the planning board met. So it's going to continue until we go to the public hearing, just continue until we go. The CBA has not commuted yet on anything, because they're waiting to ensure the planning boards, they haven't.
So I guess related to that, I have not had time to digest it, I just got it this afternoon, but Christian, the town's planning board engineer, has submitted a letter with a number of questions and clarifications that he's looking for, so I do think.
I actually just read that while they were presenting. I was checking my email.
Just about it. So we're not holding you up for that, you just came in, actually, like, set.
Yeah. I, I forwarded to my engineer, there was a couple of things that, you know, we changed or just clarified on the plans.
Right, so we just like a response letter to that, explaining what it is, if there are any changes noted on that letter and then obviously we'll do the plans if it's necessary. Other than that, I think that's really what we're waiting on. I guess, Johnny, maybe we should talk about how we want to handle this, keeping the public hearing open to the CBA with comments here, how we want to manage that.
Yeah, I know, yeah. I know, I have some other questions.
Be able to discuss this.
Yeah, but I wanted, I just want to clarify the first question. So I believe the CBA is next meeting, June 20th. And so again, the public hearing is open. I don't, I don't have the votes department, I don't think any public comments were received from the neighbor congress. So typically, if there's no changes to, to this application, the likely plan would be that the CBA. the likely plan would be that the ZBA would post a public hearing on November twentieth. There's no substantial changes. And then we would have a resolution issued for the December meeting. I'm not sure what it's the very eighteen. If there are changes that would be made, you know, the ZBA may require an additional public hearing open. So I'd say probably have a resolution December or January, depending on the kind of change from May or whether the planning board had any substantial comments.
Yeah, we don't know whether the changes will result from the CPO advisory by the reception.
We would know by the eighteenth, next month, if we're seeing one. We should know by the eighteenth what the responses are and then make a decision then as to, do we think we're good to move forward or we still have serious issues that might require changes?
It's still to wait for the ZBA.
Well, they're two days after us.
That's what I'm saying. It's really, we're not going to have determination from then, so.
It won't be till December.
December would be the earliest.
They can potentially close the public hearing that month if there are no significant changes. Although two days ahead kind of where we stand, if there are significant issues, then we still have to continue. That's the timing.
All right. We'll hold off on the resolution. Edna has some questions and comments.
Yeah, one of the things that the planning board engineer said in the letter is that no wall can be higher than four feet.
Yeah, so.
So could you explain from this, however, when we were there, and I should put a photo of the excavated area, there was a sheer wall of soil. And as I remember, that was like seven or eight feet tall on the dash. So are these regaining walls deal with that in such a way that no regaining wall is higher than four feet?
So it may be a little hard to, you know, breathe, like see from this. But basically, obviously, the elevation behind the wall is still going to be higher than the wall. But the swale beyond it essentially diverts the water away from it. So it's not going to bring it up to a spot where it's just level beyond, behind the wall. Basically, as you can, I think there's a, there may be a side detail drawing. Oh, here we go. So you can see each, in between each walls, slope up. You know, basically, there's 12 inches from the top of this wall towards sloped up here. And again, again here. So obviously, the soil, it shows here. It depends on where the wall is based on the elevation. But it would be sloped away from the back of the wall, creating this swale. And then the elevation up here would be higher.
Okay, but if you're dealing with a four-foot wall and a sheer face of, let's say, seven feet, which I think is what you said it was.
Yeah.
So then you've got a four-foot wall with three feet of soil above it. So what's happened today? Maybe you should draw it for me.
Well, I mean, there's, there's three walls. Each of these has three walls.
Yeah.
So it's three tiers. So you have your wall, and then it steps up, another wall, steps up.
Are you building the walls in front of this sheer?
One of the walls would be, again, when we had gone out, I remember indicating to you there was stakes in the ground of where the walls started, stopped, whatnot, the corners of the walls.
There's another photo that shows the back face. That's the steepest.
So like this, this is the, I think, the corner of the, essentially the third tier, if you will. So that wall, again, I don't have, don't know exactly what the elevation of like the top of that stake is offhand. But essentially, your first wall would be here, and then the second wall is in the middle.
You're building the first wall.
The first wall is down here.
Well, in front of the sheer.
Correct. And then it will be backfilled with stone to build the second one.
Yeah. This one backfilling.
This one backfilling higher.
Like stairs.
Yeah.
Backfilling the rest of this.
Yeah, and obviously, it'll be, we'll have it stone and then it'll obviously be stone underneath all of this. But we'll put filter fabric in the soil in order to have plantings in there.
The face of none of the walls is going to be higher than four feet.
That's correct.
And that's what the engineer had said. And he said that there are some locations where the walls intersect.
Yeah.
And I think there was some question as to, like, if you've got walls at different levels that are intersecting, that you're going to have a point there for your.
If you want to.
Just your notes says thirty-six inch panel here, but you're going to have to make sure that you're not extending. Thirty-six inch panel from an engineering perspective, but you're not going to be able to go past forty-eight inches.
Yeah, no, yes.
So that should probably have another note there that says thirty-six.
Forty-eight.
Okay.
Um, yeah, there we go. Yeah, I think this was like sort of the, I think that's the only spot. Yeah, it's just that spot. So that, the terrain there drops, it sort of like goes down. So that wall there is going to have a step down. It probably will have a step down here and then another step down here.
So that little jog in the wall is maybe going to start at zero or maybe six inches or something like that.
Yeah, it's going to like, it's going to drop down in height and it's going to drop down to the bottom of the wall, to drop down in elevation.
It's not a full wall.
Yeah.
Take your time.
Yeah. And I'll have the engineer indicate top wall, bottom of the wall. This point and that point, just to further clarify that.
The other thing that I wanted to do was simply go through my own view of this application, because I cannot approve it and I didn't want that to be a big surprise after we go through another couple of months. So let me just go through what my.
I think for clarity, for the different students.
Okay, first of all, to me, the terrace planting area sitting on top of rock walls, a few feet from a heavily wooded forest on steep slopes, seems incompatible to me and unnatural. The same thing, I have the same view of two fenced areas. I think even if this were done, I think the owner would not like it when it was done. What I understand is that the owner currently is working with an architect to design changes to the house. And we were told that the accessory dwelling is in poor repair. We were told that the plan is not to increase the size of the house, but after all, plans change, you know, once you're working with an architect. So, you know, is the house eventually going to get larger? What's going to happen to that accessory dwelling? Is it going to be removed or, you know, what? Building, retaining walls and accessory structures before the plan is in place for the whole property seems to me to be putting the cart before the horse. My own view is that the excavated sheer face should be returned to a natural appearing gradual slope that with plantings and proper drainage will remain in place. The other thought I had is when we have an application where significant work has been done before coming to the planning board, I think that we should ask or require the owner to attend the meetings, or at least one meeting. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
Other planning board members?
I have some comments from the CAB. George Baker, who's there along with myself and Edna, and Cheryl.
At least these were not presented before.
This was not presented before. In fact, I sent a copy to Gretchen just at five o'clock. Part too late to make it through this meeting, so I apologize for that. Again, just reiterating that the applicant embarked on a major restructuring of the parcel's landscape without prior planning board approval. The original topography of the site, an undulated wooded hillside, has been altered in a manner that conflicts with the character defining features of this and neighboring properties. The applicant made significant alterations to the topography to allow for the construction of pickleball court and lawn front area at what is now the bottom of the steep grade change. The steeply sloped bank above the proposed, above is proposed to be held back by an elaborate series of tiered rectilinear stone walls that would be built atop concrete footings with a drainage system that daylights into the embankment within a thousand feet of the Hudson River. While the project is less impactful on the local waterfront redevelopment area, then building a paper mill or a sports arena would be, the development of the landscape is out of scale with the existing development on the rest of the lot. This project is within the twenty-mile National Register Historic District, which is noteworthy for the intentional but naturalistic measures employed by the romantic landscape gardeners of the nineteenth century. The project treats the wooded and rolling hills on the property as uninteresting real estate that can be only approved by demolition and replacement with modern development. Significant resources like those found on this lot should be appreciated for their natural beauty. The CAB advocates and supports the appropriate sighting of new structures and other development, use of scale, form, and materials which are compatible with the landscape's existing components, and the maintenance of existing landforms and vegetation. The Waterfront Advisory Council advises sensitive handling of all development in this important area, which is crucial to maintaining the estate character that lends so much importance to Reinbeck's nationally significant historic, environmental, and scenic assets. Within the LWRP, projects should avoid the irreversible modification of geological forms, the destruction of renewable vegetation, and the addition of structures which, because of sighting, scale, or use of materials, will diminish the scenic quality of an identified resource. On the positive side, the applicant's intent to use low-impact lighting with baller downlights introducing plantings between the terrace areas, maintaining much of the project as pervious surface, and efforts to preserve the one remaining tree in the impacted area should be looked at favorable. And that a point.
Oh, I have one additional thought. And that is, the planning board could get an opinion from a landscape architect consultant, as we have done in the past, about what, given what's there now and what the client wants, what is the best solution that retains the natural, you know, consideration of the public property?
Comments, questions, the planning board members?
The CAB is comparing this construction to a factory?
Uh, no. No, they, the statement was just that.
Or a saving?
The statement was just that the.
Well, that's what was said.
The regulations are not just intended to apply to large-scale constructions in the LWRP.
Right. Okay.
So that, you know, while it's not as impactful as that, there is still some relevance, George.
With that said, and I love that idea, because I think in the last meeting, I said, well, what can we do to, I think, obviously, it's not a practice necessarily to be the client's landscaper, but what we have is we have a situation where something's already been disrupted. They obviously are trying to make some concessions and if there's areas that we can, I don't know, are we able to do?
Ask for what?
I mean, if, you know, and I think if there's a way to maintain what we need with the walls and whatever has to be done, but get a second opinion, that could be helpful, then I think, I think we should.
Then do you work with the landscaper?
Yes.
I, you know, I just have a general sense. I'm not prepared to go into detail, but it just seems like an awful lot going on in this property. An awful lot of manipulation and awful lot of change.
You're looking at salt.
And it feels, it just feels overwhelming. So the suggestion of, okay, that you reach out to a landscaper and attempt to see what opinion they have offered regarding all this.
And this, this, the planting, the walls were obviously designed by an engineer and the rest of it. All the planting and everything was designed entirely by a landscaper.
By, not a landscaper, by the way.
That licensed landscaper.
And have you gone back to that licensed landscape architect and shared with that person the concerns that are being expressed and asked for, as to how it might be manipulated in a way that is not as overwhelming as it is right now?
Well, after the last meeting, there wasn't like, there wasn't any clear thing that I could go to them with, because it, there seemed to be their concerns, but it wasn't like specific enough to be able to say, hey, the board said this, we would like to change this. I mean, it's been stated.
I think with all due respect, there have been some significant comments made about, you know, switching, switching fields and doing this and doing that to soften it. So I think the sense of that has been coming through, you know.
No, I understand that. But that part of it is sort of like, the sports court part of it and the fenced area, I mean, ultimately, if, if in order to move forward, we have to eliminate this fence and this grassy area is simply framed by plantings, I mean, the clients are, would live with that. The question is, is how do we, how do we, me, representing the clients, and how the clients prepare something that, say, we eliminate this, we've already eliminated the lighting, that the board feels that, okay, this is now something that we're comfortable with?
So.
I don't think so. We're discussing, is the light, we're discussing the construction of the walls and the changing of the topography of the area. Lighting is like.
A little taller.
Absorb for what we're discussing. So that is an impact, that the fact of the walls and topographic changes.
Is the, is the main concern the walls? I mean, because obviously, the members that have come out, the site residents have seen that, you know, there is, it's not like a steep slope that isn't buildable or isn't usable in some way, shape, or form, but it obviously presents a challenge that needs to be dealt with by some sort of law in order to do what we're proposing to do. There's obviously, it'd be a reorientation of walls. Perhaps there could be two walls here and another wall down here. I mean, there's numerous things that could be done. I mean, if we're putting a wall down here, that's going to be right in the middle where that tree is, which would need to come down in order to make that happen. The orientation of this was sort of mainly surrounding being able to preserve that large tree right in the middle of this area broads of shade to that area.
Do we have any kind of visual renderings of?
Yeah.
Overall?
Overall?
Overall.
And I'm just wondering, I mean, I think, because I think when we look at the map and we see all these walls, we see all this hardscape, we see all this like.
Lines.
And we're like, ah. And I think, you know, it does, it does back, it does feel like there's a major development, sports field, whatever, happening. But maybe if we had some landscape.
Yeah, he's got.
So if there's something, I saw some in the past of like, when you showed the fence, right, of the sports court. So we have.
We have that rendered.
Yeah. And also, one of the things that Edna had shared was just some images of larger boulders and rock faces.
I didn't want to go through that because it's just not done right.
Yeah. I just, I think what stands out to me really is the, just the rectangular nature.
Exactly.
At the threshold of this, you know, kind of wild and undulating wooded areas.
Are you suggesting an incompatibility with the?
Something to make it more compatible.
I mean, again, I want to mention that, you know, all the walls are all natural stones, field stones. I mean, you can't find a property around here that's over five acres that doesn't have some old stone wall running through it. So, you know, we're definitely utilizing materials that would be used. I mean, a lot of people have stone foundations in houses in the village and all over Reinbeck. I mean, this is the stone that they would use to do that.
And I agree with you, but I would suggest that, you know, maybe looking into something that.
into something that's not a series of parallel lines that are repeated in a, in a regular pattern, something that more follows the topography but still does the business of holding the...
So you would like, you would personally like to see walls that maybe flow a little more unless...
We're, we're not, we're offering comments. We're not here to design or...
Exactly, yeah.
So here's what I'm going to suggest, we're going to have to be sitting with local candidates anyway. Um, you need to take into consideration the comments from C A B and see what changes that might make on the application, whether they need that. I think between the video that has just presented out for the past couple meetings with comments, I think Edna's comments and the written comments now from the C A B, put in the hands of your landscape architect, who would afford that person the opportunities and look at all of this and see what suggestions or alterations they might make that seem to bring together the concerns of being expressed.
Well, yeah, I was thinking, well, I did, of the, the landscape architect used by the Heinzes, who we've used as a consultant in the past. I was thinking of this as a consultant who reports more than, you know, something that the applicant was also.
Well, there's that option. If you're, if we would not be in a position of recommending anybody other than a consultant such as the Cultural Landscape Foundation, which is an organization very fair, and you can go that far, but you would...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the issue, that it's, it's wrong in this very important district in town. It's unnatural, it's strange to have these terrace plantings right next to this forest.
I mean, I would, I...
What you're saying is possible, just we need to soften it, and I think there's, there's people that are more, more tolerant with what is compatible with this area and in this, yeah, in the zone.
And you might have to choose between one court or the other. You know, maybe this property doesn't accommodate two fence courts.
So can we require them, or can we suggest it and just pass on the number and say, like, here's, here's a potential resource that can help this project?
Well, we don't sign the projects for applicants.
Right.
We recommend that they find someone or, or wants to go and, um, you can do that. We essentially have to have something for that person or people, I think, as well as what I'm hearing, so...
Well, we have, we have the application, so we have something to present to, if there's something that we're choosing, we're going in that direction.
I mean, if the applicant wants to move forward, so, and they're feeling sorry if I would speak on that, so, you know, that's something we could obviously offer up and whether they want to do it, I guess, it's a good thought, right?
I mean, I, I would raise the, you know, the point that there's numerous houses, um, obviously, the previous applicant has a tennis court slash basketball court, um, on the property. That property happens to be much more flat than this. Um, this, this property has, I mean, eighty, eighty percent of the property is from here to the road, uh, and the client's hope is that once this project is done, we can go through and create like little walking paths for them through their, their woods on the property, so that they're, you know, they're able to utilize more of their property, because right now what they do is they come, drive down the driveway, nobody ever goes through the rest of the property. Um, and this is really the only section of their property where they would be able to do this. They have 20 acres, they have significant amount of property to do this, it's not visible from the road, it's not visible from, um, the neighboring property to the north, and like to be able to, you know, do this in a way that, again, is tasteful, I guess you could say. Um, this was, you know, these walls, orientation was designed by an engineer, um, we know how engineers typically design things for strength, um, and, and whatnot. Uh, these could be, you know, reoriented. The concern is if they, you know, they come back and they curve out this way, is that they're then going further into the trees.
Okay, um, so, before we conclude our discussion here, I'm going to ask if there's anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on this application. So, um, we can, we obviously continue with that here for a variety of reasons, including the C V A and the C P O letter that we received today. Uh, you have heard of concerns with landlord members, you have heard the recommendation that an outside consultant can retain to review this and other suggestions, and we can, or should do that, but I think it's in the interest to take that recommendation back to the client. And if you want to be in touch with the consultant that we used before, which is the Cultural Landscape Foundation, you can get back to us and ask for that contact information. Does that...
Yeah, if you go a whole new lot of clarity, if it's, you know, which is what I'm thinking of.
Does that guidance reflect your opinion?
It was a great suggestion, uh, or by...
Okay, um, so are you all right with that?
Right, add something?
Yes, sure.
John Lyons from Branton Lyons, the consultant of the planning board. I just want to remind the planning board members that this applicant's going to require a special use permit, and so the application will have to meet the requirements for a special use permit that are set forth in section 12567 of the zoning law, which sets forth the general standards. And just for example, and in this, meeting these standards, this may be guidance for the applicant's consultants, but, uh, section G says that the character and appearance of the proposed use buildings, structures, lighting, and/or outdoor signs shall be in general harmony with the character and appearance of the surrounding neighborhood. These shall not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, or light than would be the operations of any permitted principal use. They shall not adversely affect the general welfare of the inhabitants of Rhinebeck. The section J says the use shall not have an unmitigated significant adverse environmental impact as defined by C E R, and the determination shall be made by the town planning board, even though this is not subject to C E R, this is raising adverse environmental impact as a special use permit criteria. It also, K says that the use shall be designated and shall be carried out in a manner that protects historic and natural environmental features on the site under review and in adjacent areas. Such recommendations that are made by the town's conservation advisory board and other historic recommendations should be considered. And, you know, obviously, it also says that has to be compatible with the town comprehensive plan, the design standards, and the L W R P. So those are examples of standards that are going to have to be met by this project before it can be approved, and, uh, the applicant should consider those in formulating whatever new proposal is going to come for the board.
Ben, you have that information then? So you know the section in particular? Um, all right, may I have a motion to continue the voting here until, until you know, ever between?
So move.
Second, motion, second, hollows in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion, here. Thank you. Um, have you got any questions, actually, from the judge? Roger, Roger. Uh, the next, uh, voting for the C E T is that of Wildflower School, uh, that is at $7.05, and $7.09, my site plan and special use permit, I'm very eager to hear if you wish to...
Hi. Um, I visited the property with my neighbor, John, a couple months ago, and we talked about the problem with the driveway, because we had a reason with the neighbor. Since then, you've solved this problem, um, and what the plan is to, uh, push the driveway in very slightly, uh, on the south side of, of this property, and the neighbor will continue to use her driveway, uh, as she has been.
And you have approval from D O T to do that?
So we are in the process, um, we've gone through the revision stage, and that should be in shortly.
So D O T is reviewing it now?
They, they reviewed it, and then there's, there's a few minor tweaks that were made, and so it's now pending.
So you're anticipating approval from D O T to put in a separate document?
Yes.
Um, all right, okay.
Um, related to that, do you have agreement from the neighbor to do that?
So with this shift, if you don't need it, you need attraction to do that?
I, I agree in terms of the shift itself, but the work inside the easement where you're coordinating landscaping and potentially realigning your driveway, I think you gave agreement on that. I defer to John from a least perspective, but drawing in the easement requires, I mean, cooperation of these holders, or if you're going for...
I mean, not to really...
But I know you don't want to be on the spot, but generally speaking, I think you have to have agreement from the easement holder to work in that easement.
So I did consult with my attorney, um, and he was not, he said that it should be an option.
Okay. I, I think that's...
Did your attorney provide that guidance in writing to you?
Yes, it's in...
And we have, we have that?
No, but I don't care.
We want to see that.
Yeah, I'm happy to take a look at the...
Um, was there any other, uh, changes made to this proposal relative to parking spaces or circulation or anything else?
Uh, we, I think you would ask first to clarify the parking spaces, so we did that. Um, the space here, that's a, that's an existing, the, the barn that's there, uh, we just went to make use of it.
In what way?
Just as an additional space.
Additional space, in which to do what?
Um, so there would be kids using that space throughout the day for, um, like a gym, a day-use space, a play area, a role-play area. So, yeah.
So what I want to point out, that the plan's changed, I think, I think moderately, not significantly from the last iteration we have, and then this, both of these here. And apartment layout has changed, and the number of parking spaces has increased, as well as the driveway line obviously has changed. Um, so, I mean, I have a number of comments about that, if you want me to go through them, I'll start with the driveway.
Well, let's, um, I'll defer to you for your comments.
Yeah, so I guess just continuing on the idea of, of the driveway, it appears based on my comparison with the last one, that there are five more parking spaces in both around the island than were shown in the prior submission, and one more space between the porch daycare and residential structure to be on the north side of here. Um, those new spaces appear to be located in the front yard of the parcel, and they'll use the bulk table states at the minimum setback. Four parking is 25 feet, um, all off-street parking has to be located in accordance with those parking setbacks, and we're practical behind, we're to the side of the principal building. It says in no case shall parking be located within 50 feet of the designated front lawn line or right-of-way. I did take a look at that, admittedly, it was the ruler on a computer screen, it was not done on a full set of plans, but it does appear that the spaces lay at 916, 17, or within 50 feet of the front property lines. So that is something we have to take a look at, because this, the zoning doesn't say, it shouldn't be, the zoning specifically says it shall not be located in any case within 50 feet of the front property line, which is, which is an issue. So that's something I'll have to take a look at, uh, to see if those spaces could remain or not.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
So, um, the primary parking spaces to be used are largely the top, um, for over foot, for this pool, we can use spaces around, so over foot, not being...
The problem is that it's still a clause in the zoning, and so, we, uh, where there's a shall in the zoning, it's an apartment that maybe you could potentially, I guess, apply to, or it says you shall not, um, park within 50 feet of the front lawn line. That's pretty much it. So if you want to stop at that point, that's, that's my comments on the driveway.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that, that, um, I want, I want to be clear, what, what section of the zoning code that you're quoting?
12521. Um, that's, it does go on to say that additional screening may also be appropriate as necessary to screen parking and soften those areas from the public view. Right now, there's some screening proposed here and here, these spaces, obviously, they have the road in front of them, so it's just something to consider. It does look like, I think this is going to be screening the green area, to keep, to that basic vice.
Do we need to keep that area open? Do we have the challenges from, uh, site visit or fire, or like...
No, I'm, I'm wondering, I, I can't see that far, so are you, is there parking directly in front of the building around that portion?
12 and 13 here.
So that was the area that I thought you said had to remain totally open for the removal of, as I recall, the conversation with children under the age of 2, toddlers have to...
Yes, yes.
Have to exit the building and goods and be able to go right into that area of assembly?
Yeah.
And so they, that's still open? There's no parking in that area?
No, and we removed the, uh, the neighbors there as well.
Because I think...
We can't put shrubs here to block.
So there would be direct access from the building out into the area that she's describing? Well, I'm just verifying that there's no shrubbery or any parking or possibility of a car there at any time.
Yes.
Because that I understand is of state requirement. That's correct. Okay, so anything, continue then.
Um, so again, just, just quite quickly going back to the easement itself, there is a proposal for a perennial planting bed mix of flowers. Um, just given that it is the neighbor's driveway, I thought maybe they'd want to potentially put in some more substantial plantings that would mitigate any should have headlights shining into that property that come around the corner. Um, that's just something I raised for the planning board's consideration, bushes or shrubs that be at least four feet in height to help screen out those headlights. Uh, but again, I think a lot of that will come back to the discussion of whether or not the neighbor sign up on that, you know, changes in things in the easement, but that would certainly be part of it. Um, as I know, there is now a one-story, 735 square foot addition on the back of the structure. Um, I think you kind of asked what the need for that was, and I guess my question is, does that change the number of students that were proposed to come here, or is it just an addition to the building you're still looking at, whatever the original number was discussed?
Um, yeah, with the one-story addition adds eight, eight seats for infants.
So, so how many total students are we talking about here?
Um, 28 there.
Twenty-eight?
So the upstairs story addition is the darker, pink thing on the back, but the, the building in the lower left there, that was not a proposed use in the past?
I'm asking my next question, because this doubt is a document that was...
No. This is the first time you're saying that? Okay. Okay.
So what, what is the, I mean, the, the proposal for that separated building?
Uh, it's space, a day-use space, so it could be used as a gym, it could just be used as a space to go play, it's raining outside.
Not classroom space, it's a flex space in a way?
Yeah.
Well, that require approval, um, help from anybody else? Because all of a sudden, you're using a storage area for kids, that's entirely, and that's a huge difference, you're just saying, oh, we use it...
Yeah, 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 it would require, um, the, O C F S, the Office of Child Healthcare and Services, they would approve that space along with the daycare application.
So that issue isn't of our concern if that's been approved? Hasn't it been approved yet?
They wouldn't approve it, they wouldn't even, no, they wouldn't approve anything until you all approve it. O C F S doesn't come to see the site until you have...
Well, how can we approve something for children that hasn't been approved to be used?
Chicken or the egg, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they have, uh, looked at our floor plans, and they have made comments on floor plans, and that's, you know, it's, it's, but that's their process.
So they, they've looked at new...
No, they have, but I know the requirements, they're, they're outlined very, they're outlined on O C F S website and the daycare, I guess... the OCFS website and the daycare regulations.
We aren't approving kids who will use it necessarily. We're just approving the site plan and then the people that are looking out for the children, those CFS, is the ones who are gonna approve whether or not they can use it.
It's an outside approval.
It's an outside approval.
We want to know the intent, we want to know the intensity of the issue.
On our side, right, we want to know what we're gonna be potentially using it for and during the site visit, I do remember we said like, if there's anything that might change, bring it up. So whether or not it's approved by those CFS is out of our jurisdiction.
Well, one of the things in this area, I'm correcting if I recall, you could correct it. So the area in reference in the building in the question had been discussed in the past, that's a grassy area. And you had, no, no, no.
That's not right.
The smaller buildings in the left that we're talking about.
Right here, near me right here.
Yes, right in that area. That is, I recall, is a black grassy area that when we talked about capacity for vehicles at times of, as you call graduation.
Right, right.
Or these are programs, you had suggested that that area could also be used for additional parking.
Well, maybe that was miscommunication. No, I wouldn't, because that's a fenced-in area that we'd be using for the playground. And that's why we added spaces around the driveway, because of that.
Because in the past, prior to this building, it seemed that all of the exterior activities for children were in the upper left-hand corner of this parcel, in that area. So this introduces, now that it's all fenced in, I understand it, but it introduces the need for children to move in a different direction. And we are just asking for purposes of the safety of the children as they're outside in there.
So this is one play area here, it's a fenced-in area, we have a little out here. There is the second play area, you asked for it to be, whether it be about the plants and red hooks. And they would be tied in there with the teacher.
Yeah, a couple more. So there's the fenced-in area and red hooks, so obviously we can get their approvals for whatever we gotta do there. And my only comment on that, and I'm not an engineer, is it does look like the fence is going over the SDS area. It is an observed field, so there shouldn't be any issue, but they wanted to build that someday. We have to just work around that, that's supposed to be. So one of the things that I've been pressing a lot when we see applications like this where there are kids involved is that we have more of the parking curb stop.
Right.
There's been a lot of cases, cars park jumping curb stops going into buildings and other things, that happened with the daycare my kids go to two years ago. I'd really like to see boulders in front of each of these, and that's what we've asked before, boulders or bollards. I like the idea of boulders just because they're more natural. But something there other than that's more substantial than the curb stop, because you do have kids, you know, half a car length away, and cars can jump into curb stops. So just given the location, I think there should be something more substantial there. And that's something I've been asking for with all these types of applications.
So you want something other than the curb stop and the fence?
In addition to.
So the curb stop, there's a distance and there's.
In addition to, yeah.
Suggested like large rocks, like boulders, large, big, heavy stops, car.
Couple other details. I think we still need to talk about what's going to happen in the residence itself. I think there are still some questions on kind of what exactly is proposed for in there. And then obviously you're gonna need some details on any signage you want to put up. You can do that currently with this application or you can do it separately. But that would then be referred back to the planning board for review. And then we have to go through another process that would require additional time. So if you wanted to do the signage, that's.
Yeah. The comment I had sent in a narrative about, you would ask for a narrative, good family home, to be a red max, right?
Yeah, I believe we saw that, nothing has changed, it's still the plan.
Yep.
And you've, I know there was some issues related to building permits and there's fire history, you know, those CEOs, that's all that can.
And as far as I know, I called to find out about the fire history.
Okay.
As far as the signage, the intent was, the design location was to remain, and, you know, as with any new business, when there's graphics, new board, like, you know, it's a lot of flesh out, like that branding looks like, but I would, it's great, the board is, is looking at the size and the location of the sign relative to the zoning code.
Exactly, details, color, lettering, lettering percentage on the sign and size. I don't know when that sign was put up, I actually have their capacity lately, but you're gonna have to meet the new sign standards and they are pretty strict. Most, most businesses that have come in and reused older, buildings have had to resize their sign down smaller, but they're very, they're very strict signs. So you're gonna have to just take a look at that and decide how you want to progress. So I think that's, those are my comments. We only have the outstanding, you know, outside permits, the DOT, county health and most of those, most, yes.
Can we circle back to the 50 feet gym that you were referring to?
Mm-hmm.
So that was in connection, 1, 12521?
Yes.
Can you, can you be specific, John, I'm seeing the 50 feet.
I will look forward, we'll be going.
Hold on, we're looking, ask the planning board members if they have questions or comments.
One, just like, I don't know, just protocol scenarios around parking and childcare, like, obviously, I know there's really strict rules around parking in front of buildings and in this case, it's a temporary parking scenario. You know, it would seem like if there's ever gonna be exceptions to that, it's related to kids, because the safety of them is behind the building. So I just, is it just like a variance? What, what happens in relationship to getting an approval like that if it's about safety and makes sense?
I mean, I just remember from our site, one of our bigger concerns is like, what if you have a kid in the art graduation? You know, that's once a year. It starts, you know, or however that is, and how are you gonna park these cars? And I, you know, it was, I think utilizing as much as the space as possible in this situation, rather than curb, makes sense. I think the idea is that you're gonna pull it on the north, drop your child off, pull out in the south, you know, the very few times these parking spaces are gonna be used. I mean, the alternative is, is what you have is you have people just parking like grass randomly. So, yeah, they're gonna make their own parking spots. So, I mean, I guess back to Lisa's comment is if it was, it says shall, so I know that's kind of a written in stone comment, from my understanding legally, is that correct, John?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, worst case now we're looking at, we might have to remove a couple parking spots and put grass and what people do.
So for what reason?
I was not done talking. Thank you. So we can let people, we're still waiting for the proposal law, right? Isn't that what you originally asked for? So that's what we're still waiting for. I'm just speaking freely, that's, I think the parking spots around the horseshoe makes sense. Now, whether or not we might have to remove one or two, I think it's a separate conversation.
I think to some extent they, they make sense, but I'm just, you know, thinking of children.
Yeah.
And how they move and how quickly they move and how quickly they get away from theirs.
Hopefully they're good parents.
And I, I mean, I'm speaking only to my grandsons in a nursery school elsewhere, and they're very, very strict about, you stand in line, you know, cars stand in line to pick up the kids. So it's not like they pull ahead, you have to wait till the kid in front of you is in the car before you move in. So if you've got, I don't know how many kids being picked up at a certain time, you have to know you've got enough space there to, to back those cars up, that they're not in the road and all of that. So I think that's what we've got to spend some time looking at as a result of this new plan that we're just seeing here for the first time. But I think it has been.
Sorry?
Do you, have you, have you as part of your application, and this might be helpful, maybe I've gotten it before, is there a sort of, let's say, a daily schedule, a typical daily schedule you could provide, that this is the drop-off times, this is the pickup times, are they staggered, aren't they staggered? Like, that would help me to understand.
Sure, so I can tell you right now. So.
I'd like it written in as part of the application.
Okay, you'd like me to not explain it right now?
You can explain it now, but I also wanted to be writing in.
Writing too, okay. So drop-off times are either at 7:30 or at 8:30 for early and a little later, for people who want later drop-off. And then there will be a pickup time at 3:30 and at 5:30.
And so the parking around the horseshoe is only at times of high dense visitation by parents?
If someone wants to stop in.
So on a typical nursery school day, those spots will not be occupied at all, not by staff, not by anybody.
It could be somebody comes in for a visit, a tour, something like that.
But randomly, you would expect those to be vacant. And you have what, 14 per day at a time, drop-off, something like that, with 28 children?
Well, I would say at least eight at 7:30. And some hours of, you know, between 8:15 and 8:45, the rest of the capacity, hopefully, 20, that would be the rest of the 20.
So it'd be kind of hard to have that many kids, you'd increase the amount of kids to come in with, to have that many kids picked up that you would not have cars packed up into the road. And what does the Department of Transportation say about that?
It's not, that we haven't presented that as an issue.
Well, you've increased the number of students, which increases the amount of cars, and you only have limited amount of space for them to, you know, if you figure 20 feet per pair.
Right, so part of the reason we tried to stick with this circular driveway was so that it could, it was a quick move out of the car and.
And if I can, we can utilize this entire circle, the first car to pull all the way up to you, and our just plenty of space, that's where they do a no road element, elementary school red hook, but you can stay in the process.
I was essentially thinking the same thing, but as the plan was presented to us now, and as we understand that the children were gonna exit from the front door and be picked up directly in front of the building, I agree that an option that's available to you is to have the pickup point somewhere else on that horseshoe.
Yeah.
To greater road surface to stack that part. And I encourage you to think about that, but then we'd like to know how they're gonna get out there and how that's gonna work.
Busier time, I think you could take that approach, we could have the staff bring them up there.
Well, then.
We can provide that.
Then provide that as, as a backup plan, that we can do that?
Yep.
I think it's often the case that people have friends whose kids are also in the same daycare and they have a tendency to want to linger and chat sometimes. You know, you're parked at the top of the, of the line and there are people behind you, people can't get in.
Yeah.
And there's gotta be a way to kind of manage that, if, if there're gonna be these gushes of people.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm nowhere near an advocate for over-parking. I, you know, I think we should have the appropriate, appropriate amount of parking for the space. But you really have to be vigilant about managing that traffic flow because it, you know, it's route nine and.
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
It's treacherous.
So we just will have, no traffic in line.
I'm thinking, and I will get to any public comment, since this has moved, since this has changed time, I'm gonna suggest that we could schedule another site visit and we ask a couple of new people who haven't been there, Sean and I've been there and have a good sense of it, but I think it'd be more of an other side visit if you want to talk about that. And any, any other planning board members before I go to the public?
I just wanted to get back to the robots. I actually referenced the section that was in the section I was referencing, so I'll back up. The, the requirement to not park within 50 feet of the front lot line or right of way is in 12536L. 12536L then refers back to 12521, which is the district scheduled area in both regulations. And it is this section right here, which states in no case shall parking be located within 50 feet of the designated front line or right of way. And that's in your size and location parking spaces section within the parking standards. So the shall unfortunately makes it that there's no possibility on it. It's not a show, it's a shell.
Okay, I'll open it up to the, okay, is there anyone here in the public wishing to comment on this application?
Melody, we're going to ask John to take a look at the issue of do we need a letter from the neighbor?
Well, yes, I definitely want to get from, from the applicant what her attorney is telling her.
Sure.
So we'll get that in writing, we'll forward that on to John and ask for this.
Is the, is the instrument that contains the easement part of that application already?
I don't.
Should have.
I believe it was, but I can't say for certain.
I can attach it.
That'd be great.
And we, we did find in the files earlier the information on that easement when it was put in place. So we have that at least downstairs, but you can check on that letter, it's been already available. And then has the Highway Department DOT given you any indication that you are anticipating the final sign off from them?
They don't have a timeline, but I, I do know that he has been there, being an engineer, and has talked to engineers several times. They've talked through this plan, and so we anticipate.
Okay, well, obviously, nothing happens until we have that.
Of course.
Anything else? All right, then we're gonna have a motion to continue the public hearing on 10.
12?
18. 18.
18, sorry.
So they have a motion to continue the public hearing until November 18th.
Oh.
Second?
Second.
A was in favor?
Aye.
Close, thank you. The last public hearing for this evening is that of the River Gate House, 8 to 12 T-House Lane, site plan and special use permit for site.
Seth Stigl with Mark Reminski, PE LSPC, here this evening to represent River Gate House LLC and their application for a site plan and special use permit. The project is a phased development approach. Phase one are the items that we'll discuss this evening. Phase two will be the gate house itself. There is also a portion of this application, which is the historic greenhouse, which is being restored under a separate building permit application. The parcel is five acres. It's located at the northwest corner of T-House Lane and River Road. The parcel, as well as the existing site buildings, are existing non-conforming. In the HP20 zoning district, 20 acres is required, as I mentioned, we have five. Also, the number and size and distance from the property boundaries of the existing buildings preceded the existing zoning code. So we are proposing to improve the site with various site improvements as well as some infrastructure updates and then also some architectural improvements. The major improvements that are proposed for infrastructure are underground fiber that will run along the east side of the existing roadway. It's a grass strip roadway that runs north-south through the property. Those connections will be made to each building in pathways that are outside of previous building locations and have also all been studied in our architecture, our archaeology report. We are also proposing a change in the entrance. We had recently been able to provide the entrance change to the Town of Bryant Fire Department Chief and have gotten response back from them that the change is appropriate here. We're doing that because there's an existing carport that does not fit emergency vehicles, so we'd like to get around that to be able to access the site buildings and get that in order.
Did he comment on the fire trucks ability to come in through gates?
I indicated that they wouldn't ever use those gates because they can't get through, they go in through the other location just to the south of this. So the special use permit is required because we are in a scenic district, we have historic buildings on the site, listed historic buildings, and we are on, you know, close to Hudson River as well as the scenic road. So other site improvements. So other site improvements, we're proposing, other than the underground fiber and the change, we're proposing buried LP gas tanks and emergency generators located for each of the buildings in the event of an emergency, so we've cited all of those. And for the most part, that's primarily the site improvements. Building improvements for this project will be only for two of the buildings, there's an attachment to the existing greenhouse, this is the existing greenhouse, and that attachment to the greenhouse is shown here. They're proposing just windows, siding, roofs, trim, foundation repairs, necessarily items because the buildings are in somewhat disrepair. Similarly, this building here, the Artist's Cottage, they're also proposing those same improvements. There were a couple of things that were brought up at the last meeting, those were obviously the fire access, so we were able to create a deal with the Fire Department to get positive response back to that, and there was also some historical building context. This property is very important to both Town of Ryenbeck and the historic Astor State, which was almost three thousand acres. This was the sort of homestead for all of the farming and the plant production flowers on the site, and these buildings were incorporated in that. There were large greenhouse complexes, and those have been changed over time significantly, and we were able to go back through the historical documentation that's available in the town and just put together a little bit of that information. So Jim, if we could just go to the buildings?
The elevations?
Uh, no, the, I just, I sent you the. So what I did is essentially went through time and history, and we'll show you each building and how it kind of came about through history. So up until about the nineteen thirties, what you see in the top left-hand corner was on-site and being used and is functional greenhouse. So this is the existing fishing company greenhouse that we are restoring. There is another greenhouse here, which is, I believe, under the facade of the existing structure that's down there, believe it or not. And then this building that is in the middle here, which was used either for a potting shed or potentially as the oil lining building, was actually demolished completely over time. So we're just going to go through the quick evolution here, so this is about the nineteen thirties, this is when the original appraisal was done, and you can see the building and just the architecture. As we move through, there was also another building in the back here, I believe that might have been, you know, where the heat and things came from. That building is no longer present. Next slide, please. So this is the state that it was found in, there's a gap in time from about the thirties to the eighties, and so this is what the orchid house looked like when it was found by the previous owner here. So as you can see, a lot of the glass was in, you know, rough, and this is the one that's attached, not the one we're redoing, but the one that is now a structure. So you can see that there was obviously some work that was done onto it to maybe put a roof on it at one point, they filled in a lot of the material at the bottom, this is actually a lower greenhouse, so they did a bunch of work on the structure itself. And then they used, once they've solidified this structure, next slide, please, and they actually started to construct around it. So here we'll see where that building in the middle was completely demolished, somewhere between that timeframe, as I mentioned. The only wall that still exists of that building is still attached to the greenhouse and remains today, as well as the chimney. Here we see where they started to frame, when you zoom into this picture, you can actually see that there's still the metal framing of the old greenhouse embedded inside this structure here. So they actually built around the old greenhouse, so it's encapsulated essentially. And so once they had done that work, you can see they start to evolve into what is more of the formal building that's there now, what we call the orchid house. So if you just go down to the next slide, please. So this is what they had reconstructed the building into, and that is primarily the structure you see today, except this space here is actually where that old structure used to be that was demolished, and this was their attempt at reconstruction, that structure. So obviously, this building has been substantially modified over time, what we're, like I said, we're looking to improve some of this facade, changing out all the windows, doing some roof work, and those kind of minor details, siding and stuff. Next slide, please. So here are the proposed architectures with pictures of the existing architecture. So the attempt here was actually, after we did a lot of the research on this building, is to try to go back to that old white structure that you saw previously. And what we wanted to do is kind of bring back a few of those elements, so you have the door and the window configuration here, which tries to mirror that, and we also wanted to try to bring in a little bit of the greenhouse sort of form back to this. We will be doing the foundation repair to keep that brick, which was the original brick, and then also just wanted to pull in a little bit of the light and the skylight effect to try to mimic the greenhouse. So both on the River Road, east-facing side and the west-facing side, we will have the similar facades. And really, those are the improvements we're proposing for this structure. If we could just move to the next one, we call this the Artist's Cottage, or Artist's Studio, but it was formerly known as a Rose House, and as you can see up here, that Rose House was actually a greenhouse. So there's a course of brick, maybe three feet tall, it was original brick, and it was a greenhouse here. This structure is called the Violet House, and that was demolished sometime in the eighties, nineties, if you will. So this original greenhouse was converted into what we call Astor's Garage, and that is actually recognized in the historical record as Astor's Garage. So it transitioned into this garage structure over time, which was then abandoned and left to, unfortunately, to the day. So next slide, please, we'll see it in that state. So this is what it was found in the state when the previous owner had it, and you can see how much it's deteriorated, the roof has collapsed, this is sort of just the interior look. And what was done is they peeled back all of the, all of the construction here and got back down to the original structure. Go to the next slide, please. They rebuilt that to be able to reconstruct the roof. They put in that roof, which is now part of the Artist's Studio, you know, fully framed out windows, added windows, next slide, please. And then they mimicked what was the old roof line here, in the garage, actually, and, you know, finished off the front with a detailed paint job, and then this was kind of the product up until somewhere into like the mid-nineties. In the mid-nineties, an addition was placed on the building just about this location. Next slide, please. And that's what you see here today, so you have the original Rose House greenhouse structure, you can actually see the transition in the color of the brick here, and so this is more modern brick, and the original brick for the greenhouse is actually at this level. And then this portion was actually constructed onto the structure as part of the Artist's Studio by the previous owner. So last slide, again, this is the proposed architecture. The color scheme for this is to help match what is the existing gate house, and also to kind of pull the buildings back into the landscape a bit more, so that they aren't the prominent building on this site. The prominent building needs to be the gate house, which is right at the corner. So that's why the color is the way that it is. So really, again, siding, windows, trying to simplify some of the detail on here, there are inlays of the existing structure and the proposed architecture. That is pretty much it. I know it's a public hearing, I don't know if there's anybody here for that, or very?
Um, what? Comments, questions, Jim, and do you have anything to add?
No, so my number, you know, as I stated previously, the work seems to primarily be historic preservation and consistency with neighborhood and property character. I had noted, we were still waiting for comments from the Fire Chief, I did see the email reaching that, so I think we will check that box. This is the additional research that we discussed previously being done, and the elevations and other things we provided. No additional questions, discussion.
Comments, questions, please.
Okay, the Fire Department, is it going to use the driveway to the south, is that the entrance that goes into Fern Cliff as well? And then they would go in that and make a?
Yes, yes, as far as, right next to the old historic structure there as well, then when you turn into Fern Cliff, they're going to go through that and make the right into, up to this property. That's how they would have to get it, because the historic gate on River Road there is just too tight of the pillars to get the vehicles to.
Okay, but we have their sign off.
Yes.
Hi, I'm pleased to see these old photographs, and I am happy to see the layers of history being uncovered in this, which, you know, I think it's a really important part of the property, so I'm glad that you're paying it its proper tribute. Are you going to maintain that original orchid house within the framing of the remade orchid house?
Yes, the intention is really just cosmetic exterior and weatherproofing of these structures for long jet.
All right. Because I think that's, you know, you're kind of preserving it in place, and even though it's, you know, the building is going to continue in, you know, the present form, just with some mild modifications, there's always the prospect of going back to that. And I had read some things about orchid houses, purpose-built orchid houses, and the descriptions that are given of low buildings that are, have very low roofs with cooling spaces and warming spaces, it's all consistent with this, so I think it's a really, it's glad that you're not making drastic changes to that, because I think it's an important thing.
Well, and some of the photographs, and I would be remiss if I did not call out the Dutch Academy Historical Society for maintaining the historical documentation of the photographs that are here that have allowed this information to be pulled together, but some of them detail the step down into that what we call the orchid house, which is very clear, also relates to the sort of lower level of that brick knee wall in that house, so you're pointing out that, you know, the cooling effect of having that greenhouse somewhat subsided in the ground is an important element, so that remains too, so.
Yeah.
This began, this whole sort of process here began when we were in the field, and questions were asked about, do we really have an understanding of what was here and what was going on? And so I want to, you know, applaud the applicant's team for making that extra effort to dig out this information and to put it together so that we have a very cool picture, and I think, to my mind, it makes it, as we said when we were looking at this, it makes it much easier to go ahead, because you're not leaving any questions on the table about what was there and are we doing the right thing. I think this, this composition, if you will, of the photo documentation of what's around, makes it for me pretty easy to say that what you're proposing is not only respectful of what was there, but protecting it for the future and making improvements that make it more of an asset than it is right now. Anyone else?
Just that, you know, it's a combination of old and new, and it's not trying to, it's replicating a lot of old, but it's with some modern features, but not overly modern, which I think is really respectful of property and the history behind it, so I back up.
Anyone else? Anyone else who can cover? I don't believe there's anything other than to close the public hearing at this time, and a motion to do that?
Someone?
Second motion, and a second, always in favor?
Aye.
Close, extensions. Jim, I believe you have a draft approval resolution?
The draft approval resolution for River Gate House, for the planning board, for Site Plan and Special Use Permit under Town Code Chapter one-two-five, Section one-two-five-seventy-two and six-six respectively, for improvements to the orchid house, Artist's Studio, and Carriage House, including the location of the driveway to bypass the existing carport, on the Carriage House in eight to twelve T House Lane within H P twenty. Reaffirming the actions type two under Seeker, for which pointed by a model quality review is not required. With respect to the application for special use permit, asking the board to find the proposed work and intended use consistent with the general standards for special use permits, and granting the special use permit conditioned upon Site Plan approval. With respect to the application for Site Plan approval, finding the work and intended use consistent with Town Code Chapter one-two-five, Section one-two-five-seven-five, and approving the application inclusive of the materials in Site Plan by Mark R. Krmitzky, in addition to the other materials that have been submitted, and authorizing the Planning Board Chair to stamp and sign the both-sided Site Plan on the applicant's satisfaction of the three conditions listed there. Down below, if you want to know, we've actually revised the first paragraph here, we can do a bit of revisions on our comments in the bottom. Now states that in taking this action, the Planning Board further authorizes the Planning Board Secretary to provide the approval resolution to the applicant along with other details, next steps required to finalize the Planning Board process. We authorize the Towns Only Enforcement Officers, Oministerial and Rebuilding Inspector to issue the required permits. And note that all plans, sketches, or the materials submitted to Town of Ryenbeck Building Department for any required permits, including a C O or certificate of completion much matched the materials approved by the Planning Board. If they don't, they will be subject to rejection or potential need to come back to the Planning Board for revision review.
Then have a motion. And a motion, second, Sean, on full board, Greg?
Aye.
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 Delise?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
All right, that concludes the public hearings for this evening, and brings us to the Old Business section of our agenda, and the first matter of Old Business is that we bring our friends and Kelly Swiss, Acrituck Road, Site Plan Review for the Construction of a Single Family dwelling, covered terrace and ground floor. Good evening.
Good evening, men and chair, members of the Planning Board. My name is Dan Carey, I'm an attorney, I represent the applicants, Darren Prins and Kelly Swiss. I have Christina Ducharme from K D A with me, she's our architect. By this time, you should have received our submission from October seventh to the Planning Board, which included my cover letter and K D A's responses to the Planning Board's consultants' memorandum. We're going to just, if you will, allow us to take you through what we submitted, and we understand there was also a site visit by the Planning Board as well as by Dr. Kiviat last week, so we were hoping to hear about that and get any feedback.
Okay, and you have a particular order, would you want to do that?
Well, why don't we, you want to?
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's, you have another slide that explains the history of the subdivisions. I slid it earlier, I didn't. So in looking at the evolution of this plot, so in nineteen eighty-three, which is the top left, there was, there was just Lot A, and there was a historic road that came off of Acrituck that accesses that parcel. And what you see there is that in nineteen eighty-three, there was a subdivision which divided parcel A from parcel B. And then in nineteen eighty-five, we see that parcel B changed shape, which is significant because there was the intent at that point to add essentially a road with holosac, which in some of the language on the felled maps is referenced as a town road. But parcel B was changed in shape to access that, that town road, and the notes indicate that at the time that the town road was constructed, that essentially what has become Barrett-Tyler Road was constructed, that parcel B was to access that road from Barrett-Tyler and not from the historic road, so essentially not from, this is what was existing, and then when this part was built, the whole reason that this swath was created towards, towards that point was for access. So then in, in two thousand and one, we see that, that, that parcel, what used to be parcel A, the whole, this whole thing, was then divided into two, which is now called parcel one and parcel two. And, and that continued in two thousand and three, down here, then it was divided, what used to be two is now divided into one, two, and three. And then there was one more move, which was in two thousand and thirteen, which is parcel one got a little bigger, they, in order to make that change, they call it parcel A, so that got bigger, and then parcel one, two, and three, and parcel B, parcel one is now what we're left with. And then the last time this was in front of your board was in two thousand and twenty-one, when parcel three, this light blue, was developed, that was also called Blue Brindle, and as part of that approval, the road that you see here was put into place, which kind of skirts the original planned road and subdivision, and it almost mirrors it, it runs like straight next to it, as we showed some of you in the, in the walkthrough when we're in the woods. So that was put into place. So that was put into place. And what we're trying to understand is parcel B, it was said that when, when this road was into place, that parcel B was supposed to access its own land off of this, off of this road. So that hasn't taken place. And parcel B is still accessing it off of the original road. So really, we're, at this point, it's like, if you look at what, what actually exists, parcel one's taken care of, parcel B is taken care of, parcel three is taken care of. And now we're left with one and two, in a situation where this cul-de-sac doesn't make any sense any longer. And the, the documentation that we provided is like, there's, there's multiple things. I mean, the wetlands run straight through this section. So if we were going to actually build out this cul-de-sac, we would be cutting straight through the wetlands. We would have to clear cut this entire section next to this driveway and to make that happen. So that's what we're here to discuss with you folks is, is the evolution of, it's, it's easy to look at this and say like, obviously, the original intention was that everybody was going to come off of this cul-de-sac, but over time, things happen and different things are approved. So, so now in, you know, 2024, we're left in a different situation where there's, the reality is we're looking at what was built out and what the current site conditions are in terms of topography, current wetlands, and what the logical access for parcel two should be based on the assumptions.
I, I just want to add with parcel B, it, it has that right of way through what the Barrett Tyler Road was called something else originally, begins with an S. Right, right. And, but, so that it has that right of way through there. And yet, when the, the subdivision that we were originally talking about, all of the maintenance obligations fall on the other lots. Not on par, there's no mention of parcel B, as far as I know. So parcel B gets a free B if we go out this way and the rest of us are burdened. But as Christina mentioned, Barrett Tyler has effectively become unnecessary at this point because it doesn't serve anyone else. And the other lots have other ways to do it, including, you know, what we call Blue Brindle, which is Lot Three. So our point in our correspondence is that we, we don't think it makes sense to go out that way anymore. And it could create a lot of issues with how it's going to be handled because they never really did anything to like define how it would work with parcel B having access to.
Thank you.
Well, that's, that's, that's for, you know, that, that part of the presentation. And then we specifically responded to the comments of C P L and Mr. Levy. So you have those. I don't think we've seen any, anything yet in the way of their, their comments of, to our comments, but, you know, so we're here to talk about that. And, you know, again, going back to the question of a public hearing, I think it would make eminent sense to have a public hearing because you can, you know, you would hear from the public on these issues as well, including some of, some of the joint property owners. So I think because of the complications that have arisen and the fact that the original script hasn't really been followed, is the way we read it. We, we think it makes eminent sense to come directly out onto Accreton Road and to not go that way. And I don't think anyone wants, I don't think the town wants the responsibility of this being like a town road or a public road, as far as I, I know. And, you know, I have no idea. We, we were, we were confined to what's of record in the county clerk's office. And you had mentioned to me at the last meeting that some of these old records are not accessible or they're, they're tough to get a hold of. And, you know, we didn't see any like history, but there's a lot of evidence that that's what, what the original intent was. But as time marched on, you know, it doesn't, it's, it's something else now. And to us, that something else is, it's no longer needed. Okay? Thank you.
Again, just, just one thing, I would just be clear. It's my understanding that the town is not, they're not in your light. So just, I think that's just a fact.
Okay. Yeah, we're happy, we're good with that.
The town has pretty clearly established. Does it mean in the future they wouldn't go in a different direction? As of right now, they're not.
Right. But, but if you look at the original, and I've been doing this for quite a while on both, on both sides, you know, forming municipalities as well, the original look of it and design to me shows that it was intended to be a public road.
Well, because, because part of it was that when, when they subdivided A from B at the very beginning, they made a landlocked parcel, right? And, and they made this, when that happened. And, and this, the language, if you read this, almost looks like a correction of that action where you're like, all right, so that happened and now, you know, it really should make B have access to a, a public road. So that's, that started the evolution of, of what this cul-de-sac road started to become. And, okay. Kim?
Good evening, Allison, with the, Frank Wyatt representing the private planning board. Uh, thank you for this map. I do agree with most of this. And I have done similar researching of this. The problem that I find with this, this question right here, this is the 2001, where you said that the Barrett Tyler was to be a town road, that was the, was an intention. But there's actually an additional map note on the 2001 subdivision, which says that the 1985 filed mass 7418 is actually superseded and that the town road wasn't built. And I believe that it would still, it still shows point A to point B and C here. So I think that what was intended was that access for parcel B was still going to be off of this existing right of way. This lot right here was not considered a town road anymore. And then in 2003, which is when the subject park, parcel two, was created, parcel B wasn't subject to that approval. It was a three-lot subdivision for parcel one, parcel two, and parcel three. This private road was, it's stated on the file map, but it's actually meant to be completely on parcel three. And it's, it's said that Lot One, Lot Two, and Lot Three shall use the common access. It doesn't mention that that's a public road. In fact, even in 2021, there was a town board resolution to actually change the private road to Terrific Drive to Barrett Tyler. So again, it even mentioned in 2021 that that's meant to be a private road. So that, this subdivision map note about, you know, that parcel B was getting access off of this existing road to part, I think it's like point C, and then there's another point E here. You know, that's in existence until the time that either Accreton Road had been approved to be suitably able to be accessed off it, or a town road has been done, that hasn't been done. I think the map note for accessing parcel B off of this road wasn't included in the 2003 subdivision because, again, parcel B and its access wasn't subject to that approval. Now, in our last meeting, Mr. Leary had raised a question. We had pointed out that Lot One, Two, and Three is supposed to access their lots off of that common access road. And it was mentioned that that was questioned in the map note. And if it was clear, which in my opinion, that is clear, how access is supposed to be for Lot Two, the planning board's supposed to enforce it. There was a question raised if the planning board can reconsider that map note or they can change it. I did do some further research on that. The courts have said that there is, such twerly, there's no authority to rewrite a map note. But the courts have said that if there's a material change, a material change of conditions, they can consider that. Now, Mr. Leary has provided, and Mr. Ducharme has provided some ways that they consider it to be material change. I, again, we don't believe it's a material change. I think of all throughout this history, there's been a lot of discussions about site plan issues, uh, site distance issues. And A C P L has also raised site distance issues. And Bob Wyatt, the highway superintendent, has raised site distance issues. I don't think that has changed. So in my opinion, reading the map notes and, you know, taking that, it says that the Barrett Tyler's Terrific Stride is no longer considered a town road, it's going to be built. I don't think anything is materially changed. But again, points have been made about, from the applicant, that what they're, what they're considering to be material changes. And I do want to just mention for the Blue Brindle in 2023. So again, they're still accessing off of this common drive area. They're just not accessing it off of the cul-de-sac. But again, the whole road's common access road is on their property. So they are still accessing it as it was through in 2023. I do plan on providing some of the history as discussed. I wasn't able to put it in writing, but it is a complete history, you know, as it demonstrates, it's gone on for like 14 years in different radio iterations. So I can certainly provide some of my findings in the writing and I'll share them with the applicant in a bit later.
So will you work around that and submitting it to us, I assume, before our next meeting?
Yes.
Anything else?
Uh, that's, that's the, 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 the planning board members, if they have any questions, if Kim?
What was the year that you said that, I can't think, the map note? What year was that one?
Which, the one, what about, which one?
The one, yeah, that one, upper right.
This, the 2000s?
The one, you said the map note, there's no material changes, shouldn't be changed. Yeah, that one.
Oh, well, well, so the material change, that's a case law? It's not a map note.
Okay.
What I was saying was that there's an additional map note on the 2001 subdivision, which says that the previous filed map, which talks about this right of way, shall exist until such time as the subdivision road, the macrohook is constructed. Oh, this, the 7418 says there's a, that this map supersedes this map in terms of having this be a town road and says the town road was not constructed. So I take that to mean that access is still afforded off of this shared driveway. And regarding access to parcel B going off of the cul-de-sac here, again, in the, did you just go down to the corner one? Yeah. Because again, it says here Lots One, Lots Two, and Lot Three shall use a common access. Where again, parcel B was not part of that subdivision. So parcel B does not have access off of this common access road. They're not parcel driving agreement. Again, they're on the complete agreement in one, two, and three, not parcel B. Parcel B should still be getting access off of this road. It's not like they are. That's one interesting thing.
When was parcel B developed? Wasn't it a house?
Uh, I don't know when it's got a house on. They put it, as soon as the start, it was a historic home. The, it was previous to 1980.
So the property is actually Mancicanning and the name of the house itself is Mancicanning, correct?
Uh, I don't know. But parcel A and parcel B have had historic counts on both of those parcels well before 1983. And so when they, when they made parcel B, it was a historic, call it 1900, I don't know when it was, but it, there is a, there is a historic home on parcel B. Yes. And actually, like, this property has been subject to a lot of recent iterations. There was actually one where they, I think they tried to subdivide into six lots. And then that showed like a road coming all the way up here, but that never stopped.
I, I think one of the objections that I heard was the fact that parcel B has that access to the cul-de-sac, but it's not participating in the agreement for maintenance or anything like that. But there's no cul-de-sac there. It's just, it's kind of a cleared area, not for yourself.
It's kind of cleared as woods currently.
Okay.
Right. So I don't think it's been built. And again, that's a statement that's been made by the applicant, has the concern they have. But again, what's created here in 2003, which is what created Lot Two, which is a subject particle?
Yeah.
And it says this map note, Lot One, Lot Two, Lot Three shall have access, common access from Accreton Road, meaning this road right here. It does not include parcel B. Parcel B is not part of that approval, but also parcel B should still be accessing it here and they should not be accessing it.
It doesn't necessarily even have to touch parcel B, the access to Lot Two. It doesn't have to go to that cul-de-sac.
Right. It has to, just as a common, just as a common access, it's what's on the map. But there's no saying that, you know, it has to be off the cul-de-sac if there's another location that it could be off of, that would satisfy the map note.
Any other questions?
And I think it's, is there anything that requires that this be built?
I defer to John. I don't believe so because it's not, it's still.
So it's just all access.
But yeah, but the thing that has to be enforced from the planning board's perspective is that Lot One, Lot Two, Lot Three shall have common access. It doesn't specify where.
So we don't have to worry about a bunch of trees that's being specified by that because to create a cul-de-sac, you don't have to create that environment. We just, we're asking, the, the map note is communicating that it's a common drive that three lots have access to, the access to lots.
This has shown that that access exists as an easement on lot.
Agreed.
So.
No, I was going to say, as a planner, I would never advocate, given the situation that that be built as a town road, we've been clearing that needs to be done. It's an access point. And then we can talk about what that access may or may not be. But the design was intended as a town road. So now it's, it's, it's a paper street essentially on a map.
And we were able to locate some documents from the 2003 subdivision. The resolution, the plan, and the technical said it was a common access area driveway. It doesn't mention that it's a town road. So again, because of that, I think that was wood road access for B. Again, I think the main issue of concern, the main issue of concern that's being expressed regarding the driveway access is the site distance issues still being raised for that reason. That's why I don't think a material change has occurred from the 2003 map note, which is why, in my opinion, and my recommendation is that you should enforce the map note.
Well, I would add that further, there was also mention of the, some sort of water issue at that other location on Accreton Road. The possibility of flooding and some need for flood control. And also, there's a U T C wetland, right? Immediately on the other side of Accreton Road. So that's kind of, that puts the, you know, the driveway and all of the disturbance that would be associated with it within that hundred-foot buffer, I think. I haven't seen it flat down like that.
If I, I just want to make sure that you don't have any more questions for Kim, people.
Just doubling down to make sure I get this on. But to clarify, it, the, the rule is that it has to be shared with all three lots. It's not the clarification of exactly where it's, right? Am I getting there right now? Okay.
Anything else, Kim?
None for me. Um, there's three other big questions.
And two points of clarity that I wanted to make. One is that the, the intent originally, I, I, I agree with you that the language changed over the course of the filed maps. It was called a town road. It was called a subdivision road. It's called different things. The name of the road changed. But the intent from the beginning and the change from 1983 to 1985 was to rectify a landlocked parcel and give it access to a public way. That's point number one. Point number two is, in the eighties, when this happened, we didn't have the understanding of the wetlands that we have today by any means. And in, in 2024, now that we've mapped them out, we have the understanding that as much as we wanted to, that we want to build out this, this cul-de-sac, if we do, we wanted to, that we want to build out this cul-de-sac, if we do, that the access from cul-de-sac to parcel two cuts straight through the wetlands. So that is, that's a consideration that wasn't in play when all of these notes were made on these filed maps going back, showing back four years.
And to your point, that is obviously, among other reasons, one of the things, you mentioned that Dr. Kivya made his site visit last week. Thank you for accommodating him. And we checked with him today and he is preparing a new report, which he has indicated will be available to us, we hope in the next couple of weeks, but prior to what we'll be continuing to another month, and he will have that available at that time. I think some of the questions that, or some of the concerns you're expressing, I believe he will be commenting on, because I know in addition to looking at the property, he went in there primarily at our request to look at the possible mitigations for the notice of violation in the stop work order. That was the initial reason for sending him in there. While he was there, you granted him the opportunity to look at the whole perimeter of the property. So I'm anticipating, I can't guarantee, I don't know when he's going to submit, but I anticipate he will be providing us information about his observations, about the wetlands. And so we'll have greater clarity about what he feels are the field conditions that would prevent or allow for a relocated driveway. Is that, you were on the call as well. I think that summarizes where we are with him. So I'm not prejudging what he could, might, or say. He hasn't shared with us any of those real observations. So we'll await that and share it with planning board members as soon as we have it. And I think it will go to the higher court we are sitting.
I just, I had a question of Kim and I just wanted to respond to something you said. Kim, you said there was a town board resolution making this a private drive?
It didn't make it, I don't know if it made it, I don't think it, it references to this drive as a private one. I can get you that, I don't have it on. I'll continue to read.
So again, we're not wedded to this being a town road. We just pointed this out as the, you know, evolution of this access area. But we still don't have an answer to the problem. And the problem is parcel B, and I have the language right here, has a permanent right of way over what was then Sotirovich Road and is now Barrett Tyler Road. It's not conditioned upon it being a town road. So you have one parcel, parcel B, can come in here at any time they want, come through here after my client does all of the work, if we were going to go down that way, and we have zero maintenance obligations. They were completely overlooked in the, in the approval that we've been looking at. So that's a serious problem, because right now, it's like the others are finding other ways to get there and my client is going to be left carrying the burden of taking care of this. And not only that, and I raise this in my letter, who's going to build it? Who's responsible for building it, even as a private driveway? We don't see any, any answers to that.
Is it a serious problem?
Yes, it is. I do, there's no, there's no maintenance obligation, but.
That is, that shared road is located entirely on lot three.
Right.
So how is there a serious problem that a road that doesn't exist, a driveway that doesn't exist is going to access a part of a shared drive that's entirely located on the neighbor's property?
Well, it could be a problem for the neighbor if they don't want it, but apart from that, but it is a serious problem because parcel B has zero obligation, when they did this maintenance.
Well, but hold on. One, one, one of the, please.
There's one point of clarity.
Christina, are you?
I'd like to just make a point because I think it goes to Kim, what you said earlier. So it's hard to read it on this, on this, but I'll just read the notes for the 2023. So it says lot, lot one, lot two, and lot three shall use a common access from Accretwood Road. This access has been approved by the superintendent of highways. Said access shall coincide with existing right of way as it was previously conveyed. So previously conveyed is a reference to what happened prior, right? So this is like, like the notes, kind of like, it's like you copy it, you copy it, and copy it, it changes, but it's referring back to everything that happened prior. So I don't believe that that takes parcel B off the hook.
I think the problem is the maintenance agreement is devoid of any mention of parcel B, the maintenance agreement that was approved by the town. So parcel B has a permanent right of way out of this road because Sotirovich, I think, was the original owner of this property and he created a permanent right of way when he conveyed it to Freeman Agreement in 1987. And there is no contingency or condition about either maintenance or abandoning the other right of way, which he also has a right of way over. So he has like this permanent unqualified right of way over what we're calling Barrett Tyler Road and zero obligation to maintain it. I think that's a serious problem. And I think there are material changes. I know we're going to be receiving a memo from you and we'll be able to respond to it and we thank you for that. But we do think there are material changes over the course of time and we would like to articulate what we think they are.
Okay, well, once we hear from Kim and we get the full report from Dr. Kivya, we will have that available to both of us as soon as they become available to us. And we'll take a look at that. And until then, I think unless there's something else, we'll just be continuing the public hearing at this time.
Can we schedule a public hearing for the next meeting?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Not to, we're not scheduling a public hearing, we're just continuing this at this time.
Would you be considering, no? And can I ask why?
Because I don't think we have all the information and because we are still at the point where we don't have any further information from Dr. Kivya about what might be involved in a notice of violation of the lifting of a stop work order.
Kim, I respectfully ask when you may think you would get that?
I would defer to our counsel to answer that question.
I think you want to know where the driveway is located.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, you still have, obviously, the opportunity to go back and present an alternate driveway design that conforms with the show and so you can do the stuff. We're going to go round and round about this until we get some of these answers.
But I just have to ask, and I know that the board is not, like, we're responsible for creating this design, not the board, that the wetlands is.
We're waiting on that, as I explained to you. I would want to hear from Dr. Kivya. I understand you clearly articulated your position on wetland. You brought in a consultant to provide information to us. So I'm going to defer to that and I ask you to wait for a while.
Will Dr. Kivya be commenting on the issue of the impending changes in Article 25 of the D E C with Vernal pools and how that may impact the original?
He's aware of it. I can't tell you what he's going to say.
Because that's, that's another issue. I was, and the last time, I would really like to know, you know, we're talking about another wetland that's not even on our property, that's across the road. And then we have what we think is a Vernal pool according to our biodiversity consultant. That would be violated by going through the original.
We understand.
So we do, we would, we would like to hear on that.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
So at the last meeting, you had mentioned that you would send something in writing from Mike Nwiki, who'd indicated that he was the one that did the wetland building.
I think we were going to, he was going to respond to Dr. Kivya.
Yeah, so we'll.
For his original report.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't know if he staked out the areas and.
Well, would you please contact him and ask if there was a report prepared or if so we'd like to see it.
Yes.
Yes, and yeah, to be clear, he staked out the wetland area, the, we, those were then surveyed by Marie Welsh.
Yep.
And the flags were still intact in the ground last week when we walked in.
But we still would like to see or hear from Mr. Nwiki whether a report is filed. And if so, we'd like to see it.
Okay, I.
So there wasn't, I just want to be clear though, that there wasn't a report filed because we hired him at the board's request to flag the wetlands. So if the board is requesting a report in addition to that, then, John?
So just something to say he's certifying the wetland boundaries, 75.
Because I contacted him, he's actually abroad right now, so.
Marie Welsh is not qualified to delinquente wetlands. So we just need, something from the Wiki to say, yes, I went out, I flagged it, those are wetlands.
Okay.
So you want, so essentially, you want us to send Marie's survey, and the Wiki's files back to the Wiki to say that he's certifying it, correct?
Yes, yes.
He's an expert.
Yes. How can he certify something if he hasn't?
But how can he certify something if she didn't know that, like, Marie?
Marie is the surveyor. It's pretty clear what we're asking.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not testing any of these virgins, but you're saying that Mike flagged the wetlands, but we don't know that. There's nothing in the writers.
So you're just, you're just wanting to remember.
And it requires, it's a task that requires somebody who's qualified to do it to perform the task.
So if we get a letter from you saying that Mike flagged the wetlands in March of 2021, that's what you're looking for?
No, we'll look at your letter from Mr. Nwiki.
Yes, and to say that he looked at Marie's survey and that the Marie's survey can properly conveys the boundaries of the wetlands as he finds.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll be continuing with you in a month.
Yes. Okay, and what date is that?
Your number 18?
Second.
Second. Oh, is it February? On the other side.
And we will share with you in the memo and also the memo considered from us. So, thank you.
No, I refuse, I mean.
Okay, I guess, I guess in anticipation of what I'm about to say, I'm just going to take a break, break, while we reconvene on, again, the second order of all business proceedings, and that is a Rockledge, 492 Echo Road, Site Plan Approval, Special Use Permanent Wetland Permit for Condo Units. And, oh, that was very.
It's unexamined.
I see. So you'll recall, just to refresh on our memories here, now, taking up the next, the next small section. Bless us for anticipating that we needed to take a small section to see here. And we've got the, the stands and historic preservation. And we'll see how we end up there. I think we also suggested whether our owner or.
The way, odor, light?
Yeah, of the furniture now, so.
Snack resources already banned for earth, wind, and fire.
Does anybody, no? Okay, yeah, all right. So I'm just taking a little stretch here. It's been a long night with a lot going on. About Jim did to sort of give us an introduction to what we're attempting to get through tonight. Give shape of patience, I think, given, given what was before, so I think we're in progress. So if you can all hang into a little bit, maybe we can.
Okay, so this evening, we'll see how far we get. We'll run it through all, see what it takes. I did submit to the board, I'm calling it, memorating, Seeker Part Two, meeting number two, memorandum summary document for your review, trying to summarize the issues as they relate to these four items. Those items being, looking at number nine, impact on aesthetic resources, item 10, impact on historic and archaeological resources, 13, impact on transportation, and potentially 15, impact on noise, odor, and light. I think I just did this at the beginning of the meeting, just to make sure we get on the record. The E F in Part Two, the E F Part Two and Determination of Significance is a critical step in the environmental review process under Seeker. It's a step which the, which lead agency must decide whether or not what they propose Type One or Unlisted Action is likely to have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Want to note that the proposed project review process, the board has received numerous comments from nearby landowners, attorneys representing several distant landowners, and members of the public, both in writing and in meetings. They've voiced both opposition and support for the proposed project, although of course the evolution of the current iteration, which is currently for a three-lot subdivision, 36 residential units, new buildings, and adaptive reuse of existing historic structures as well as reuse of other structures on the site. Note that the project was advertised for secret lead agency by the planning board in a resolution dated June 5, 2017. Over the course of approximately eight years, the project has been reviewed and modifications have been made and examined openly with info from all parties involved. And that throughout the project, the board and its consultants have analyzed proposed and have analyzed the proposed and revised studies, designs, and plans from the applicant. And that the applicant thus far has conducted and completed the requested studies during the review process, has updated materials, has changes were made to the project, and their studies have been reviewed by the planning board and the planning board consultants. That, I guess we would like to start, I think we can just go, I don't know if we can go in numerical order, if anyone has a favorite they'd rather start on.
I guess I'm looking at nine, 10, 13, 15, and I guess I would suggest that 13, which is the impact on transportation, perhaps be last tonight and we get through the others. If we do, we decide if we want to move on with that, because I think that one's got a lot more attached to it, so.
Yeah, I think we can get through a bunch of it, but we may want to bring a few of them off it back to finish that discussion. So I think we at least maybe start it, we may finalize it.
Anybody care about the order? Okay.
Well, we'll do, we'll do nine, 10, 15 here, just to mix it up a little bit. So item number nine, impact on aesthetic resources, land use of the proposed action. And unfortunately, the way secret forms are written, there's some language isn't proper. But anyways, says land uses of the proposed action are obviously different from or in short contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and the scenic or aesthetic resources. I took a look at item number nine, I'll bring up the renderings, put on the screen here of the new structures. Obviously, you know, the existing structures, Mark, unless you want to say otherwise, are intended to remain essentially as they are today, you know, stabilized.
Existing.
The exteriors.
Yes.
Essentially, no significant major changes on board for the exteriors of the existing historic structures. So the, you know, the new elements would be, you know, these that provide the inventory of us in the past. So I took a look at this and I do think that this question requires us to go directly to the sub-questions for this issue and this item, so. I'll bring up number nine, so everybody can see it, follow along if you do. These are the questions for impacts on aesthetic resources. So, unfortunately, I'm not answering to my memo, I'm sorry, it's going to be the only one. But the F A F workbook for answering Part One of the secret form for this question states the following, which may be useful in assessing this item. Question asks for information on those scenic and aesthetic resources that are officially designated and publicly accessible. Officially designated scenic areas include scenic byways, scenic roads, scenic areas of statewide significance, scenic trails, and scenic rivers. Other areas may also be designated at the state level for scenic and aesthetic reasons. Excuse me, some local municipalities have conducted their own scenic inventory and have designated those areas in county or local plans. Others have designated critical environmental areas for aesthetic reasons. Publicly accessible aesthetic or scenic resources are those that can be viewed from public lands or public roads. The workbook further states the question is focused on consistency in land uses between the proposed project and other land uses that may be seen from or part of a scenic or aesthetic resources. So getting specifically into the sub-items, subitem A asks if the proposed action will be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resources. Based on the relevant Part One questions, and those are, when I say relevant Part One questions, I'm referring to this section of the secret form versus relevant Part One questions that refers back to what was submitted us by the applicant. Based on those that are reviewed by the materials, there is no indication that there are any officially designated scenic or aesthetic resources related to the property or surrounding properties. The project site is not scenic based on any official designation or the definition of the term that I just noted. The question seems to need potential discussion about whether or not the planning board has reason to believe the Rockledge property could be considered an officially designated aesthetic resource, because based on some research that I have done, its placement on the national register could potentially make the property an aesthetic resource. It is not that way that I can find in the language of the nominating form. It is not that way that I can find in the language of the nominating form, per se, but some resources do seem to indicate that that could potentially be something to look at. If the board determines it is an aesthetic resource, I think the answer to the question is no or small impact may occur. The historic buildings are going to remain essentially as is. If it's determined by the planning board that the historic registered designation makes it an aesthetic resource, then a discussion on the level of impacts that may come about from the action should be undertaken. And that relates specifically to subitem A. That's because we're looking at this. So we know the proposed action will be visible from any officially designated federal, state, local, scenic, or aesthetic resource. And it really comes down to your thoughts on historic property. Which is not an easy answer. See, John told you, these are going to get more interesting as we get into them.
It's a lot to consider, because it is, without doubt, it's a designated historic resource.
Do we recall when it was, the designation was granted? It's one of the earlier ones?
Nineteen eighty?
It was probably in that first batch. And I do recall, in looking at other properties, in particular Sharon, the Sands House and the Skylar property out there. There was very little attention paid to the surrounding landscapes when these early nineteen eighties designations were made. And that is something that obviously bothers both of us in the field, but it does not necessarily emphasize in those national registered nominations in the eighties, eighty-six, in that period. If they were like, I believe that the, if you're thinking about the components of a cultural landscape that I know Charles Burnham looked at. We saw him earlier this evening. And so he has worked in town before, but the things that I would consider significant elements within that would be the circulation system, the road systems, the placement of buildings relative to one another. Very little of that is visible from the road. In terms of the aesthetics of it. But I also am pointing out the fact that I don't think that they're making major alterations to those circulation systems that significantly impact what was historic driveways, carriage drives, or the turnaround in front of the manor house itself, but orientation of the manor house for the operation. Basis for the name.
And that's part two of the question. Do you consider it to be an aesthetic resource? And if so, what is the impact? No or small impact may occur, or moderate to large impact may occur. So the designation is one thing, but then you have to decide, you know, if there's, if you designate it aesthetic, what is the impact? But if it's not aesthetic, then there's no impact, no or small impact. So there's this kind of two-part question.
The other aesthetic would be the buildings. Those are the stuff that change that. There is.
Are they, but they're not visible from the road?
But they would be visible from a designated resource technically, which is part of the question, wouldn't it?
But you were saying, but what is the designated resource?
Right, where is that? Right.
This one's kind of funny, because the resource is the property itself. I think the question is really, the way you read it almost seems like it's geared more toward if there was something like this adjacent to where an action happened. So if you were on Rockledge looking out from it, would you see the action taking place? And I think that's, that's kind of the way the question seems to be framed in my mind. It's a little tough to assess it of the action itself taking place on, the project itself taking place where this, this resource may land.
Something resource, or you'll be inside the property.
Right, but even so, the question still remains is, will the action be visible from any officially designated federal, state, local, or scenic aesthetic resource? So even if the board were to designate an aesthetic resource, then would it be visible? What would that impact be? No, small, or large, it's really the only guidance we have. So we have to go further to say, is it positive or negative, right? Or maybe neither. It's, it's a multi-part.
I really love that you referenced the Skylar House, because that like may be something to really visualize in comparison. And it is really hard to like interpret it. What are we looking at from? Is it from the road? Is it from the house? Like, what is that impact of the historic experience of it? I think it makes an impact. I think there's an impact. Again, just thinking of the Skylar House and like these other structures that, when I've gone there and been there, I'm like, wow, this has really impacted the historic nature of this property, just from a visual impact. But again, that's what I'm imagining being at the structure, being at the driveways, being experiencing the historic nature of the property. From the road, maybe not.
If you're, and of course, historically, the property, as I mentioned, you know, there was, as there are in many states, you know, sort of two components. There was the historic property, it's all in the immediate environment. And then there were support structures elsewhere on the property. So if you're on the property today, and you're at the manor house, the construction of condominium units in the field are not going to be visible from the house. So the construction of the condominium unit, there's not going to be an aesthetic impact from the manor house out, because the changes that are occurring won't be visible.
Right.
If you're on the carriage trails, the original carriage trails, you will have an impact from the construction, a visual and aesthetic impact. Question remains, is to whether it's small or significant or is that the way?
The other thing to remember is that these are rolling up to the larger question, right? The item question, the item nine question in the guidance says, you know, it's asking for information, and these are supposed to help us, so I'm not sure this one necessarily does, the others will, whether it's viewed, I want to choose, the question asks for information on those scenic and aesthetic resources that are officially designated and publicly accessible. So we are talking, and this one's complicated, because it's internal, technically we're on a private site, so it's not publicly accessible. But you do have views from the road, and this sub-question, I don't think is totally aligned with.
I did underline that when we were talking of the officially designated and publicly accessible. So the publicly accessible puts a slightly different spin on it.
And I think that's really what we're looking at. John, you have, we need to talk about, but really, again, the overall question is asking if the land use and actions are obviously different from or sharp contrast to the current patterns between the proposed project and scenic or aesthetic resource, which again, doesn't really quite mesh. But is there, is there a public visibility, is there a publicly accessible point where you're going to see something that is creating an aesthetic issue that you think then has an impact, positive or negative, that we, no or small impact question?
Is Ackert Hook one of the designated roads that's in the comprehensive plan? Because there was a number of them. So really, we don't, even the, even the road itself is not a scenic aesthetic resource.
It's not designated scenic road.
Right. Even if it were visible from Ackert Hook Road, it would be arguable.
More interestingly, a more classic application of this could be the Heinz application tonight, which is where you have, you've got the Albert Fox landscape nearby, and there's a view to the river, and then there's Mill Road, and you're talking about the, you're, you know, how is the proposed action affecting the view across, the view to the river, to that landscape, and to the river across the property from the road?
That's a definitely good point.
Much clearer in that case than in this one, where you can't see.
You guys already actually zeroed in on that with the comments that were being made in this comments in particular. So, you know, it's naturally, you naturally gravitate to those questions. So it's more difficult here, and there is the issue of public accessibility as it affects this question, because this will be, these will be private.
And the view from Ackert Hook, the view from outside in goes through the original driveway entrance, which is not changing. And even, as many times I've been in there, I don't recall getting a glimpse of the house itself until I'm well in that driveway. I mean, I'm trying to think back and remember, but it's not like you get a peek in the house that's being altered or changed.
Is the house the one designated historic element I'm talking to?
The house?
Yeah.
The manor house?
Yeah.
I think the contributing buildings, there's the coach, the coach house and the.
Carriage house.
The house.
And the house. The water tower. Water tower, that's actually, because it's still water tower.
So you're not going to be able to, obviously, you know, relate to underground conditions, topography, and trees and everything, but at least you can see the spatial layout of what we're talking about.
Well, and also, just answering this question on Seeker doesn't obviate our judgment of the overall application, right? This is just getting through the seeker process. And if we have other concerns about compatibility, those can be brought up at a later date.
And these are supposed to help you answer the overall question of item nine. So how does this play into the overall question of item nine? And, you know, I mean, we could go, you could go to the safe route and say, okay, let's assume it designated as an aesthetic resource. What then becomes the impact? How do we measure that? There's no.
Yeah, it's like, this is going to change public infrastructure in the property. It's not a public space.
Right, and that's where I think the next one will help answer. But I think this one is a tough one to start this question with. It's, you're really like John said, and Miss Margaret, but it really relates more to like what we're talking about Heinz, looking into a property like this from a public. I think it's a little tough.
The workbook says, this question explores consistency in land use between the proposed project and other land uses that may be seen from or part of a scenic or aesthetic resource. It's oriented to those scenic and aesthetic resources that are officially designated and are publicly accessible.
See, and publicly accessible part.
I think the publicly accessible.
Yeah, so we just have to say no?
I said no. It's only one disagreeing. I agree. Okay. Sounds like we have consensus around that.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we're saying no to nine?
We're saying no to nine A. We're going through the subitem. So subitem B, it's up on the screen, asks if the action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. And as I noted above, I don't believe we have any scenic views related to the relevant part one questions and arguing other materials. I don't have any indication that that would be the case, and thus no obstruction, elimination, or significant screening would occur from the proposal. So I believe the answer would be no or small impact. I did note here, you know, just analyzing it further, we did take a look at the proposed modest, modest addition to the stone barn, which is the one out by Ackert Hook Road. And this is going beyond the question, just to talk about this in general, because that is the one addition to a historic structure, I believe the only addition to a historic structure looking at on the property. And though it is not an officially designated scenic view, it is viewable from Ackert Hook Road, so I just thought I'd discuss it really briefly. Given the size and location, it would not seem to result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of the interior of the property. The addition would only be visible from select locations along Ackert Hook Road and just yards behind the proposed addition. An existing structure is an upward tree-filled slope that creates an termination of any view further into the property, based on my recollection of being out there. The other new structures, condominiums, are located well in the property, with public views are already generally terminate from various existing additions, including vegetation that we found in the topography, and the public views that they exist well in the interior of the property would not seem to be significantly impacted by this element. So that's going beyond the question that's being asked of Mr. Seeker, but I think it's just important to note as a part of our review process. Subitem C, asks if the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points seasonally and or year round. The publicly accessible vantage points would primarily be the local road system. Based on the relevant part one questions, and again, this is where it doesn't totally work, the answer to the sub-question would appear to be no or small impact may occur. However, if you look at the subitem without the relevant part one questions, and from an on-the-ground perspective, it's clear that the answer to the item is yes. The action will be visible from publicly accessible vantage points both seasonally and year round. Obviously, we have the stone barn right up in the front of the property that's part of this project, among other things. The project is, the property currently is visible and will remain so with the development of the property. If you analyze the potential impacts further beyond the part one answers, the stone barn, stone cottage, and existing driveway, as well as the dormitory storage building are all currently visible from Ackert Hook Road and will remain so. Current visibility will change through the reactivating of the existing currently vacant buildings for active use. There's also the modest addition proposed to the stone barn that I mentioned a second ago, that could publicly be visible on the back and side of the existing structure. The potential impacts of the proposed addition to the stone barn would however be smaller if, as they gave variances granted, to transfer two of the units to the manor house, interior of the property, because it would reduce the proposed size of the potential addition, because it only would have two units in it instead of four. And that's based on an earlier submission. Again, the new condo structures will likely be visible through an obstructed view into the property through the woods, particularly during leaf-off, from differently publicly accessible vantage points. I thought that this was an item we should discuss regarding potential level of impact related to the subitem. While the subitem itself and the relevant questions don't really, I think, answer the question, I don't think they're, they're that useful. I did go a little bit beyond that. So the question would be, based on your knowledge, do you believe that there is a no or small impact or moderate to large impact on visibility from public vantage points from the road system?
Is there anything about the development of that, of the condos on the hillside that is maybe going to thin out the vegetation and make it more visible?
Well, to say, I think it will be seasonally visible and certainly be obscured through the vegetation that's there and some of the topography. For default, I think it might be a little more visible, but I don't know that it would be.
Which units are on the state mountain?
What's that?
By the state mountain.
Yeah, please tell me.
I guess we're looking at again, from a scenic, aesthetic standpoint, right?
We're still answering question nine, impact on aesthetic resources, yes.
So can I read something from your workbook that might help you? Okay. So GEC gives some examples of, for this sub-question, small and moderate to large impact. So it says, for small impact, it says, some examples of small impacts that might fall into this category are, one, only a limited portion of the project will be visible when there are no leaves on the trees in the rest of the year. Vegetation will largely screen the site. Two, the project can only be seen from very limited locations that are publicly accessible. Three, some portion of the project will be visible during the winter when leaves are off the trees, but the scale, color, dimension, and type of land use is consistent with and not in sharp contrast to the scenic resources and surrounding land uses. So those are their examples for small impact, moderate to large impact. Some examples of moderate to large impact that might fall into this category are, one, the site will be very visible all year round and will not be screened by vegetation. Two, the project is viewed by many publicly accessible vantage points. Three, the project results in a land use that is in sharp contrast to surrounding land uses seen from or in the aesthetic resources. Four, the project is of a scale, color, or dimension that will be highly visible from publicly accessible scenic resources.
Is it, is it possible that these white buildings that are, you know, kind of, even though it's clustered development, quite a bit larger than the surrounding residential development that's pretty typical of that roadway? And even if that is visible partly through the trees, that might qualify as a moderate impact?
Well, maybe you can shift back to the workbook. It's the degree of visibility from.
And it's kind of across that, that kind of wooded wetland, and I, it gets overgrown in the summer pretty heavily, so now is not really a good time to look at it. But I know earlier in the spring, you could see a little bit more clearly into the site.
Yeah, it's how much you can see, and then if you can see a little bit, it's what does the, how much of it is in stark contrast to what the surrounding?
And just that it's seasonal, was.
Yeah, and also the scale, it's only, you're talking about two of the seven new condo clusters.
I've been on that property when it's cold. Very, very cold. So I, that's not to bring it, it's not summer. And I recall walking in those areas, and I don't get any sense of, you know, if you can see in, I'm assuming I can see out. And I just don't get any of that when I'm in the interior all these time.
So this is the driveway, I'll just come on, you know. I'll just come on, you know, here. So that's looking at that, obviously. I think we're about in that area.
If you have to go farther, you got to, yeah, you haven't gone past Tara's house yet.
That's our house, yeah.
Okay, and then the sewer treatment is just off to the right there, right?
It would keep going down. There's, the string cross is underneath.
Right, that's where the outfall is.
Yeah, there's a D E C sign.
Where the marshing area is.
Which you can see right up until like mid-Jim. Totally disappeared.
Very fair to Acro Hook's consent.
And that's where the big D E C wetland is, right?
It's just one reference point. You know, so you've been out on the site, and I'm not saying this is the best way to sit down. I'm just bringing it up just as a reference point.
You might just get a sense that there's something back there, but I don't know. The site is cleared for the development.
I don't see it as...
It's no or small.
I think it's no or small. I just, I don't see it as...
I think it's going to be seasonal.
I think, I think the parts that we read from the workbook on the seasonal and glimpses here and there, I mean, I don't see anything. It's wide open.
Yeah, I think I would feel differently if they weren't white.
Yeah, it's probably the same thing. If they were of an earth tone, it would reduce that potential.
Potential.
And I suppose the applicant might be open to considering, you know, a change in the palette so that it's often maybe possible to be through. I don't know how, is this the time to suggest that, John? Or does it get suggested just in the process of discussing it? I mean, I'm not sure I'm ready to say that's a mitigation required. I agree with Craig, but gosh, that would be a pretty easy...
I mean, you have to really, you have to categorize the magnitude. So you have to, you would do two steps. First thing is to decide whether it's moderate to large, okay? And then, when you go through the, when you finish doing the E A F Part Two, you're going to go to Part Three, and you're going to take every moderate to large impact, and you have to decide whether they're significant, because not every moderate to large impact is significant.
I think it's still probably no impact, but I think that it can even be less of an impact should there be further measures needed. So I'm still leaning towards just small.
General agreement on the board.
Do we have consensus?
It doesn't have to be unanimous. I just, I, I think there's going to be visibility that will need some sort of treatment later in the process. That might be as simple as changing the color palette or introducing some sort of a, you know, mitigating screening just on that one side. I don't know.
But there is almost consensus.
So John asked, John asked the question, is that the answer? Is that seasonally and/or year-round? It's a two-part question.
I think it's seasonally. I do too.
Yeah, definitely seasonally.
Definitely seasonally.
No or small impact seasonally? We have answered both questions. The impact of the seasonally.
And I'd say year-round also. I, it's not going to be, year-round, it's not like all of a sudden, like, different trees. There's still, there's still going to be, you're not going to have the green vegetation. There's still, especially in that marsh area, like, that stuff doesn't know why.
All right. Moving on to question B. Subitem D asks about the situation and activity in which viewers are engaged while doing the proposed action. Specifically, is it routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, and/or recreational or tourism-based activities? Based on the relevant Part One questions, we believe there are no impacts, considering the seeker form Part Two reference, where the answer to the question seemed to be no or relatively small impact. However, if you look at the subitem without the relevant Part One questions, from an on-the-ground perspective, it's clear the answer to the item is yes. The action will be visible publicly from accessible vantage points. So the first question would be, well, it's based on the, we'll discuss it later. So if we analyze this item further beyond the Part One, the proposed activities would certainly engage viewers by routine travel, and there's certainly a potential for recreational or tourism-based viewing if the tourist happens to be traveling past the development as part of other activities in town. I don't believe the project itself is a tourist attraction. It is a residential development. The question for the planning board to discuss is the potential level of impact related to viewer engagement while viewing the results of the proposed action. So in your opinion, looking at this, you know, is there a level of activity in which viewers are engaged while doing the proposed action? And then, is it routine travel to and from work or recreational or tourism-based? And then if so, what is the impact for both of those? I believe there is an impact to be decided. So shall we start with routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work?
Actually, the workbook examples are again helpful in this.
How often do we view the site? Is the site viewed from scenic or aesthetic resources? It's important to recreation, tourism? How will the project site change the user perception that that's a scenic resource? What are the impacts? So these are the questions. This is about impact. It does get into, this is the next question, so this is a multiple part.
Yeah, so the examples might be helpful.
So small impact would be the project site is visible from minor roads used by a limited number of locals, residents only, and is not part of recreational, tourism-related activity, or a limited portion of the project site is visible, but because it's not in sharp contrast to the scenic resources surrounding land uses, there's no diminishment of the designated resource. The moderate to large impact examples are a project site that's visible from major roads and highly traveled routes used by many residents and visitors, visible from or is in or instructs a scenic resource. It plays a key role as part of recreational, tourist asset of the community where the site is visible, and because it is in sharp contrast to the scenic resource and surrounding land uses, significantly is the driving and appreciation of the scenic resource. And then we'll get to that.
I don't see any moderate to large impact in this.
I don't see any.
For residents or tourism for both?
Certainly not for tourism. I mean, this is, you know, it's not...
Well, didn't we, okay, routine travel by residents? Wasn't that kind of answered on the previous question where just a woman in a mout was visible and not visible? A neon sign?
Well, I mean, the project is visible for minor roads and is not part of a recreational or tourism-related activity. So I think that's...
That one's clear.
That's pretty good. A limited portion of the project site is visible because it is not in sharp contrast to the scenic resource. I think that's what you're pointing to. We already, by virtually all the questions, decided that it wasn't in sharp contrast or surrounded, and that there would be no diminishment of the designated resource. I think it's small. Going, oh, and visible from major roads, that doesn't seem, that's not true.
It was struck by scenic resources.
Scenic resource that plays a key role as...
So again, there are no scenic resources. We answered that originally, we talked about aesthetic. There's no official scenic resource, and it's not a recreational or tourist asset against a residential development. So there is no stark designation.
I think it's no or small. Similar projects visible...
Oh, no, that's the next question. We'll get to that one.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
Yeah, certainly.
So we know our small impact for both routine travel by residents, locals, and recreational tourism. Question E, the proposed action may call, asks if the proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoying appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource. I think based on the answer that we had above, the answer to that would be no, no small impact would occur. Because we already talked about the aesthetic resource designation. Subitem F asks if there are similar projects visible within specific distances of the proposed project. I read this one two different ways, and I'll explain to you why. First, I believe it asks whether or not there are similar projects visible from or near the proposed project site within the distances listed below, which is zero to half mile, half mile to three miles, three to five, and five plus. If you look at it from that perspective, whether or not there are similar projects visible from or near the proposed project site, based on the relevant Part One questions and argument about the material, I don't believe there are similar projects visible from this project site due to topography, footprints, and other existing features.
I agree.
So I take care of one way to look at it. The other way I thought we could look at this, and I didn't find a lot of guidance in the workbook to kind of help with this, and John might clarify, but I think we'll be able to come to an answer anyway, is if we assess the question, it's asking if there are similar projects, i.e. residential developments, that are visible from public views, which in this case are roads, within the distances listed below, inquiring about whether or not there are similar land use patterns, such as development of multiple residential homes as part of a coordinated project, such as a subdivision. So if we're looking at this, are there other subdivisions around of the residential home developments? May or may not be, you know, condo units. They are technically single-family homes regardless of whether they're attached or detached. I took a look at the, analyzed this utilizing partial access, aerial imagery, G I S mapping of distance, utilizing the manor house as the center point. I did include a map on the back page of this for you to see. And just for reference, when you get to three and a half miles, you hit the middle of the Hudson River in some instances, just to kind of put it in perspective. When you get to five miles, you're approaching the other end of the town on the east side, east side of town. So if you look at zero to a half mile away, and these are not to say that these are comparisons of projects that these are absolutely similar. I'm just looking at where there's other developments, quote-unquote, subdivisions, you know, groupings of homes that have been put in together. Within zero to half mile, straight-line distance, not-driving distance, you have Reader Road, one and a half to three miles. You've heard of Delano Drive, Cove Road, McWire Lane, the Village of Ryan Deck, Supastor Lake, Hilltop Road, and several subdivisions in the town of Milan. When you get three to five miles to the west, you essentially hit the Hudson River. You get there in about two and a half to three miles. But when you do that three to five mile distance, you actually cross the river. You get to Port Ewan, Parks of Kingston, 109 W, New Roundup Creek, the Ulster Park area in Ulster County. To the east, the land use pattern generally becomes more rural. And for this distance, the only thing I can find is even a relevant reference is the LA Institute for most extensive, which is really pretty... And then five miles plus gets you to High Park, Kingston, Red Hook, Stanford Hill, in different directions. So I looked at it from two different ways. The seeker workbook notes for determining this, if there'll be an impact, if the proposed project is similar to multiple developments or projects in the area in terms of scale, context, dimensions, density, design, and location, then there is likely not to have any impacts to scenic or aesthetic resources. Reviewing agency needs to decide what the threshold is for how many other similar projects may be visible. Questions asked include things like how many uses are similar to the proposed project? How far away are those similar projects? And how are the land uses similar in terms of their design, scale, color, intensity? Those kinds of things. So it didn't seem to indicate to me which way we're supposed to review it, so I did both, whether it's from the site or within certain distances of the site. So I kind of gave you both. And again, we're looking at scenic and aesthetic resource evaluation. So you see no or small impact or moderate to large impact as it relates to projects visible within those distances. So the item nine doesn't ask us to divide it up that way, thinking them right up by the middle. So maybe we just start one at a time and ask if, what maybe think the impact would be if we were looking at similar projects visible within those distances from standing on the Rockledge property?
That's the list down below.
That would leave a list down. Yeah, well, I mean, so for this one, saying, you know, imagine yourself standing on the Rockledge property. Do you see other similar projects visible within this specified distance?
No, I don't either. Those are so different.
And they're just, they're just, I mean, they exist. They're different. They're neighborhoods.
They're neighborhoods. They don't private stuff it, so like, it's a totally different thing.
They're not visible.
None of these guys.
Nothing's visible, right.
I think it's no impact.
So then, part two to this, and again, I made it a two-part question even though it's really only one, is, you know, are there other similar developments from public views, in which cases we're talking about roads within those distance rings that I noted?
None that you, none that I can think of.
No?
I can't.
Both existing or planned?
Are there any that exist?
Here's the analysis for this one. It's up here on the screen. How many land uses are similar to the proposed project? How far away are they? How are the land uses similar? And if there are no similar uses, will it be in sharp contrast to the overall landscape?
In this case, are you talking about things like the woods?
Right.
And that's what you get that's similar in any sort of land use pattern, right? They're both in the village. I don't see them as...
That would be like the closest tree we could draw. But even that is like different.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I can't think of anything comparable other than those two condominiums developments.
Really, the proposed activity is sharp contrast to existing resources. Existing land use patterns.
I think someone with this question is aiming for is to sort of have you figuring out how anomalous this project is to your...
Oh, so it's...
But it's more scenic.
Well, I, so we could be saying that there are similar, there's two similar condominium units within the community of Ryan Deck at this time. But in terms of, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head that... I certainly think the number of units in those two condominiums in Spart exceed the number of units we're talking here. The extent of the land that's developed and not under easement or protected exceeds what we're talking about here. So this doesn't strike me as something coming in that's all of a sudden huge and out of scale with anything that exists here already.
And the fifth word is visible.
Yeah. I mean, the only other one that I can think of that I don't think you mentioned, which is very different, is the apartment complex, Cove, is it Cove View? That's on Primmers, right? And that's a very, I don't know how many units you have there, but that's...
Small projects. Visible within the following distance. Visible within the following distance. We can't see on some spot.
Right, that's why...
I think the visible part.
That's why I did it from two perspectives. I just don't think I can...
First thing.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think...
So the first one would be no, because you can't see anything from the property. So we're saying, you know, there's no impact in this. There's no visibility. The second one would be no, because there are similar projects within those distances. And again, there's no threshold here. It says if you get a certain number, whatever, distance, that all of a sudden it triggers something. It's mainly just a question, I think, to talk about, and as John said, whether or not it's...
I think that little paragraph to the right of your banner helps me. The questions to pass include how many land uses are similar to the proposed project? How far away are they? Are the land uses similar in scale, color, intensity, type of land use? How are their walk-in entries?
I think that part of the problem is this is kind of like a one-size-fits-all for. You know, you could be building a sports arena. You could be building a shopping center. And, you know, there are shopping centers all over. This is the strip for that. Okay, well, it's not, the addition of this is not going to have an impact on the scenic resources then. But it... resources then, but it, you know, the degree to which this is not such a visible project from public road.
Yeah, well, that and this, if there are no other similar uses, users, I think that should be uses, will the proposed use be in sharp contrast?
Not in sharp contrast, yeah.
Not in sharp contrast.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could definitely say it stands out or whatever, but it's not.
No, I don't think so. Then I think you do have these others right in the village that, I don't know that you want to say it set a precedent, but they exist as a type of housing use.
There's also the Cove apartments, they're like a mile away.
That's what I mentioned.
High Park, yeah.
Yeah. I say no, I agree. Is there a consensus around that?
Yeah, numbers, well, there's some within five mile distance.
Does that include, include that section?
So, yes, that, thank you. That brings us to number nine. Based on the answers that you all gave, we have no or small impact may occur for items A through F. Are there any other impacts to discussion that you want to have on the impact of aesthetic resources?
Not at all.
If not, then it would appear that we would answer no to number nine. What's an agreement?
I will point out that it's 9:30.
So that's about six.
And I'm, I'm looking at 10 and asking myself if 10, which only has a page and a half, can, if we have the stamina to do 10 and then call it night, I don't, I'm not an advocate of wearing us out until 10, 11 o'clock at night. Maybe much too much to be an advocate, but, and I will, I will just say after that, you know, as I pointed out before, we don't have a sign off yet for the SHCBO, so this, this might be just considered a preliminary, you know, discussion about this.
It would be, and I mentioned that in the first paragraph, that the board has decided that since applicants applying for tax credits, the Supreme Assessment will assess this part of the project review. The necessarily may have to be part of SEACER, it's certainly part of the project review, but we get into that in this question.
I think we could, we could, we could get into it because I don't think, I, I think that base is really covered by the tax credit part of the project.
You want to go through historic and archaeological resources, or something?
I think I have one for number 10.
I want to agree.
One for number 15.
It might be faster than we.
All right, so we're choosing between one for historic preservation and one for 15. At your pleasure, folks.
I mean, odor or structure?
Yeah, no, what was the other option?
Odor.
Odor, yeah, then maybe we do odor, that might be.
I, I think.
Let's do.
There are thresholds and numbers that they make this.
Okay, what are the number?
Number 15.
You were saying there's thresholds, what did you say?
What he's saying is that, I think what he's saying is when you get into noise, odor, noise, odor, and light, I think, announcing some more, that there are established thresholds that you can measure against, that doesn't become subjective.
I agree.
Who would you, who would you agree? So item 15, it is up on the screen. It sounded like, like a Q and A. Top of the question on the screen. Top of the answers. Anyway, the answer to the question for the impact on noise, odor, and light, will the proposed action result in increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting? The answer to the question is yes, since the property has proposed to change from abandoned to active use. Therefore, recommend the planning board go through the subquestions for the items and answer the question, so we'll proceed. Sub item A asks if the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. Local regulation would be our zoning code. Based on the relevant Part One questions in our review of other materials, the proposed action will not produce noise, it will exceed existing ambient noise levels during construction, operation, or both. The Part One questions also state that the action will not remove existing, Part One questions, which is the form of the applicant, I should say, also state the action will not remove existing natural barriers that could act as a noise barrier or screen. The add buffering and screening will be planted on the site as part of the proposal, and that was in the appendix of Part One. If we analyze this item further regarding the local regulations and move beyond the Part One questions, Town of Ryanbeck has Section 12558 noise regulations, which was enacted to preserve, protect, and promote the public health, safety, and welfare and the peace and quiet of the inhabitants of the town. The code is very detailed and encompasses many areas of potential noise that is regulated, some specific acts or events intended to be controlled that could relate to any development project, and the final constructed elements include construction, repair, demolition, air conditioning, refrigeration, ventilation, machinery, and other similar noise generators. The code provides detailed acts that are declared to be prima facie evidence of a violation of the Noise Chapter, with detailed associated DVA levels, which is the measurement of the noise level, and the time periods when such noise would be considered a violation. It includes prohibitions on certain activities like construction and demolition between certain time periods and on Sundays and holidays per Section 12558. The applicant, as all applicants for construction and demolition activities are required to do in the Town of Ryanbeck must abide by the code regulations regarding noise. The April 22, 2024 response to comments memo that we discussed at the previous meeting, that came from the applicant, notes that all construction activities will be limited to permissible work hours as enforced by the Building Department. Based on the relevant Part One questions and assuming that zoning code noise regulations are adhered to during construction and by residents if the development was occupied, it would seem the answer to the question of whether or not the project will produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation would be that no or small impact may occur.
I agree. Great.
Okay.
All right, great. Everybody consensus?
Sub item B asks if the proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home. Based on the relevant Part One questions in our review of other materials, blasting is not proposed to take place for this project. However, nothing straightforward. Analyzing the item further through the SEACER Part Two form for the subitem does not list Part One question D2A, which is the relevant question here. D2A does not, it's not listed in D2A, but, I'm sorry, D2A does contain a question about the potential for blasting. D2A is not listed here as one of the criteria for this, this subquestion. So I took a look at it, and D2A states that the information contained in the Part One states the project will not utilize blasting. The April 2022, 2024 response to public comments document states that the need for blasting is not expected. So I think it's important to note that blasting is a significant item when discussing a development proposal. At this time, it was imprudent to state definitively for the record, if you guys agree, that would be to the board, that the project is submitted and currently being assessed is going to be reviewed with the understanding by all parties that blasting is not going to be used to construct the work proposed. If blasting is determined to be required or may be required, the applicant would need to submit a detailed blasting plan. Relevant SEACER documentation will need to be revised, and the SEACER item would have to be reviewed and discussed at a future date. I think we need clarification on whether it is or isn't going to happen, or I don't think we can answer the subquestion. Blasting is a significant issue if we're going that route with development. So I don't know, Mark, if you have any input on that, or if we can confirm at this point we can move forward with the understanding of blasting is not proposed, or if we need to discuss this further.
But you understood what he was saying. I don't have to, that, that, you know, should you come back with information that suggests blasting would occur, we'd have to revisit this.
I just wanted to, I wanted to have, I wanted to have a detailed discussion because, I mean, the world is rocky, and I probably brought some highlights. And so, you know, that would be candidly, you know, the problem.
Well, I think where we are is we can respond to it based on what we learned today, which is, you know, but if you come back with different information, you're going to have to go back to this.
Right, and, and so I will, I will confirm with the applicant.
Thank you, because I actually skipped over something important, which is actually your answers to the two questions we asked at the last meeting, which I do want to go over before we break tonight. So those would be essentially in that same vein, we're asking you to come back with us with some information on that question, so we can move forward. I'm going to get back to that. So at this point, I guess we will ask the applicant to, to look into this and confirm the information, and then we'll go from there in answering sub item A.
But given the facts as they've been presented, are we at this point saying no or small?
Would you like, since we're not going to be finishing the EAF Part Two at this time, do you want to leave that blank?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should.
Internally, you know that.
That this is a consensus as, as it stands with the information that's been presented. If there's additional information, we'll revisit it. Okay?
For some reason. I'm curious, the rest of my questions are not here, so we're going to have to come back to that.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say, we're having some, odor.
I don't know where they went, so we're, we're going to have to actually.
Well, there are no light, no odor clearly in one of the documents here, no problem.
I don't know what happened, I did not catch that, so we're going to have to come back to this one anyway, because apparently my notes didn't end in the middle, like, I apologize, I don't know how that happened. So that's 15 for the moment. If you don't want to do other ones tonight, we will call it, but I did want to go back through actually the two items.
Okay, let's, let's wrap up the last two items and then we'll call it, that's for tonight.
So.
However, let me just say we're a little bit ahead because you've already prepared some information for us on, on historic, and so we may jump into that earlier than that stuff.
Yeah, well, so for the next one, I'm going to bring this back, we'll, we'll come back with these, and then I guess the questions before we really wrap, as well, I don't want to add any additional to these questions, or if we just focus on the ones we haven't been able to get through tonight at the next meeting. So what I did forget to do that I wanted to do was actually circle back to the questions that were asked at the last meeting by the board. Well, the first one was related to item six, and Mark has provided us with the responses and its impacts on air. While the planning board had determined the project would result in no or small impact may occur as it relates specifically to item six, that there are no state regulated air emissions sources proposed, and there are not, we had asked to just confirm the type of H vacuums to be used, because I believe heat pumps, and talked about the benefit of heat pumps in the New York State, discussion of their benefits as heating and cooling type. It has been confirmed that heat pumps will be used in all new condominium units and all the structures. So all the site buildings will utilize heat pumps or heating and cooling. So we can finish that question, but we had already answered it because of the specifically related state regulated air emissions. The other question that we had asked was question 14, and this was the most significant one, was the impact on energy, and I walked through a quickly review, a quick analysis of how much energy we thought we would use, and the fact that there is a threshold in the SEACER of 2,500 megawatt hours that would trigger us to have to go further, I didn't think we'd be anywhere near that. Mark's team did go back, the team did go back through and provided us with some estimates utilizing the U.S. Energy Information Administration, it is well detailed in their memo, and what they stated is that the calculations for the structures in the proposal estimate the energy uses of full buildout to be 676.8 megawatt hours per year, which is well below the 2,500 megawatt hours per year that was the threshold, the SEACER threshold, and that was to look at whether or not a project utilized more than 2,500 per year. Based on that information, the project does not meet or come close to the threshold, and the answer to the subquestion would be no or small impact would occur.
What was that thinking test?
Oh, it's 676.8 megawatt hours per year. Threshold is 2,500. So based on that, along with the other questions that we did for item 14, which was, item A, the proposed action will require a newer upgrade to an existing substation, the answer we came to was that no or small impact may occur. B, the proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission system to supply or support 50 single-family or two-family residences, the answer to that is no. D, the proposed action may involve heating or cooling more than 100,000 square feet of building area completed, the answer to that was no or small impact would occur. So based on this, I believe that, letter C, the proposed action may reutilize more than 2,500 megawatt hours per year of electricity, the answer is no. Even if we doubled the amount of electricity to be used, we wouldn't make that threshold. So look for your consensus on that, and then we'll move on. So we did answer that the proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy, but to determine through the subquestions that no or small impact may occur. Thank you. And I will figure out what happened to that question.
Wait, the one you were, for D, I have my notes from last week, I'm waiting on confirmation for the size or something. So what, what is the size? Is it less than 10,000 square feet?
For D, it was about 76,000 square feet in a area.
And hold it up for the last one.
Yeah, we had, we had that one, we were just, we were waiting on the megawatt hours.
Okay. 77,000. Okay.
Who has a question?
77,536.
It's not on this.
Okay. I, the only thing to report is we did have a, an opportunity to meet with Christian Mark, and we recall that we set, set aside certain sections of this review at which point we were going to ask him to impress it. So we have explained to him what we were looking to do, and we asked him to go back over the sections of this review that we will be asking for his input on, and he, of course, has asked for, you know, a couple weeks or more to pull all that information together, so we tentatively, I think, set a second meeting in November as a target for him. So just to give you a heads up on that, we'll be plugging in the other smaller ones before that, knowing that we're getting to the more complicated engineering questions that we're winding here. So tentatively, that's what we're looking at as we're scheduling. So.
Second meeting in November?
Yeah, eighteen, eighteen.
That's virtually.
Yeah, that's what, you know, unless something changes, I mean, he may get back to this and say, I can't possibly be ready and we'll do that, but if he felt confident that he could do that, so unless you want to delay this longer, I think you could ask Jim to make some, you know, send us some suggestions about what we might cover in the next meeting. I don't know, we need to talk about it in depth here tonight.
I think we covered about three that are on here, and that does include transportation, so I would ask really quickly if you think having Stephen Rock here would be useful, we can ask if he can be here in two weeks, if he's available. Otherwise, we can go through transportation, see where we end up, and then request him if we think it's needed.
I'd be comfortable going through it without any, so.
I don't know.
And then if we run into, if we run into issues, then we can either send him a question or we can, you know, if it becomes more complicated than we think, we can ask him to do that.
So we will do historic archaeological resources, impact on transportation, and we'll finish up noise, odor, and light, noise, odor, and light, and I will make sure to get you to pull some summary information, but I apparently somehow, sorry.
Thank you, everyone. I know it was a long weekend, I thank you for your patience and your participation. I just want to say, it's, you know, I know these are complicated issues, but I was really pleased with the level of discussion of all of these complications.
I think Jim's doing excellent job.
Jim's doing an excellent job regarding these, but I'm thinking of all the other earlier applications that require lots of questions and lots of analysis, so thank you, go home, have a nighttime or something, tea or whatever, and I'll have a motion to adjourn. So, a motion in a second, all those on paper. I hope this compares to you. And thank you, public, for the.